Get started if we can.
Yeah, okay.
Call this, uh, call this meeting to order. This is the meeting, uh, the April twenty first meeting of the Concord City Planning Board. Uh, Madam Clerk, could you call the roll?
Yes, uh, Dina Condo Dimitraki, here. Councilor Brent Todd.
Here.
David Fox.
Here.
Amanda Savage.
Here.
Matthew Hicks.
Here.
Rich Woodpin.
Here, alright. We have a quorum. We will open the meeting. First item on the agenda is approval of the March nineteenth, uh, minute, uh, minutes. Would someone like to make a motion to approve those minutes as submitted?
So moved.
Second.
Motion has been made in second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. A quick, uh, agenda overview for you tonight. Um, I don't know if that's pretty loud. I don't know if you can pull that down, Mike. Quick little, uh, agenda overview, uh, items nine A, which is a minor site plan for commercial building on Shaker Road. Item nine B, a lot line adjustment for sixty-eight Shaker Road, um, and zero Shaker Road. Item nine C, a minor site plan for sixty-three School Street. And item nine D, a site plan for conditional use permits for Kiasarge Energy at Old Turnpike Road, uh, have all been requested to be moved to the May twenty first meeting. So would someone like to make a motion to move those items to the May twenty first meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made in second and all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. So for all of you looking at the agenda, I think all those items are in front of everybody else, so should move things along. First item on the agenda is, uh, design review applications by consent. Um, in your packets, we have, uh, items five, A through five H. Items are handled by consent. They're reviewed by the board. Uh, any member of the board have any items on the agenda, on the consent agenda they want to pull? If any member of the audience has any questions or concerns about items five A through five H, if you could make yourself known. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Moves us to item six A, which is, uh, extensions by consult, uh, consent. Wilcox and Barton on behalf of First Church Holdings LLC request a one-year extension to the April seventeenth, twenty twenty-four conditional approved minor subdivision extending conditional approval from April seventeenth, twenty twenty-five to April seventeenth, twenty twenty-six. Any staff update or anything that needs to be done on that?
Nope.
See a staff memo, but it pretty much just is the general stuff?
Yep.
Okay, so we've got, uh, we have to, there's no public piece on that?
No.
Okay.
It's consent.
Okay, so it is on consent. Would someone like to make a motion to grant as extension as outlined?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Brings us to the end of our consent agenda items. Uh, seven, determination of completeness by consent. There's none. Designer view applications, public hearings, there's none. Brings us rapidly to section nine, site plans, subdivisions, CUP amendments and public hearings. If we could read item nine E again, for those maybe popping in late. Items nine A through nine D have all been continued by previous motion to the May twenty first meeting. So if we could read item nine E into the record.
Richard D. Bartlett and Associates LLC on behalf of Granite Center LLC and the New Hampshire Historical Society requests approvals for a minor subdivision application and certain waivers from the subdivision regulations for a lot line adjustment between tax map lot six four four two Z six, which is unaddressed Store Street, and tax map lot six four four two Z seven Eagle Square in the optional corridor performance district.
Okay, there is a determination of completeness component to this. Staff has determined the application complete, not a development of regional impact. Would someone like to make a motion to find the application complete, not a development of regional impact, and open the public hearing?
Move.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Let's get a quick staff update on this if we can.
Uh, not much to update on this one. It's fairly straightforward. It's a, it's a simple lot line adjustment. Just adjusting it slightly to the south. Uh, there was one variance that was needed and the applicant, uh, requested that and that was approved by the zoning board of adjustments, uh, last month or earlier this month. My days are all blending together. So, should, like I said, should be fairly straightforward.
Okay, great. Welcome to the table. If you could state your name for the record.
My name is Dan Mullen. I'm here on behalf of Granite Center LLC, the New Hampshire Historical Society. And as Dan Marie said, pretty straightforward. We just shifted the lot line a little bit further south and the variance was for, uh, shifting of the lot coverages because of that, which we received. And there are no improvements, so we're not going to change the impervious area and everything else is status quo. It's going to keep, uh, being used the same as it is right now. There's no changes to the site.
Okay. Remember the board have any questions with this applicant? Do you remember the audience have any questions or concerns about this application? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Thank you very much for your testimony. Um, okay, pretty straightforward. Your packets have got, uh, well, for just as straightforward, there's a lot of pages here, Ann Marie.
I know.
Eight point one, um, again, using as findings of fact, the information that's in your packet, uh, the limited testimony we heard tonight, but again, the, the information that we, uh, that we have in our packet is our findings of fact. We've got a couple items on the agenda, a couple items on our docket to, uh, to roll through. Eight point two is to grant the waiver request below from the listed, uh, sections of the subdivision regulations using criteria RSA six seventy-four thirty-six two N one and section thirty-eight, thirty-five, excuse me, section thirty-five point zero eight of the subdivision regulations. And those are outlined in your packets under eight point two A, uh, B, C, D, and E and F. Would someone like to make a motion to grant the waiver requests as outlined?
So moved.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Uh, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Eight point three is to grant minor subdivision approval for the lot line adjec- adjustment to annex point five seven acres from lot seven, uh, to lot six in the map lots, uh, the tax map lots that are listed as subject to the following precedent and subsequent conditions, and those are outlined in precedent conditions one, A, one A, one and two. I think that's, is that two? Oh, I'm sorry. A.
It's A, one through seven.
A. One through seven, and then B is subsequent condition, uh, one. Would someone like to make a motion to grant minor subdivision approval as outlined?
So moved. Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. That moves us on to the next item in our agenda. If we could read item, mine up into the edge, into the record.
T.F. Moran on behalf of West Street Keene LLC requests approvals for minor site plan application, a minor subdivision application, and certain waivers from the site plan regulations and subdivision regulations for the addition of one thousand eight hundred sixty-seven square feet and a condominium plant at tax map lot forty-six Z sixty-three, addressed as three one three Loudon Road in the Gateway Performance District.
Okay, uh, again, uh, staff has determined the application complete, uh, and a subdivision application complete, not a development of regional impact. Would someone like to make a motion to find the application complete, not a development of regional impact, and open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Got you, guys. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Open the public hearing. Welcome to the table. If you could state your names for the record.
Hey, good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, staff. I'm Jonathan Devine. I'm a civil engineer with T.F. Moran's group in Bedford, New Hampshire. Beside me is Jeffrey Lassard, manager of, uh, West Street Keene LLC. He is representing the applicant tonight. Um, we're here with a pretty simple proposal. It's a building addition to the existing Dollar Tree at three thirteen Loudon Road. The addition would be off the, um, left-hand side of the building. The parcel is a condominium unit, uh, that shares, um, the same parent lot as, uh, the new Texas Roadhouse, as well as this parking area over here, um, on the right side of the screen. The, uh, little bit of history on the site, this site was originally approved in two thousand and three for the condominium, uh, land division. It was, uh, Smokey Bones Restaurant at the time and then became New X and now is Texas Roadhouse after a rebuild. The Dollar Tree's been there since two thousand and eleven. Uh, this addition was approved by the planning board in two thousand and eleven, uh, but was not built at the time. And so the same owner applicant is coming back now, uh, with re, seeking reapprovals to build, um, the building addition. The building addition itself, uh, like I said, is going to be on this right-hand side, or if you're looking at the building, left-hand side of the building. Um, it was already cited for that, so right now it's just like a pad area. Um, there's adequate utilities via a sewer stub. Um, water has to be carried to the new, um, portion of the building as well as electric and gas. Um, we're proposing two new street trees in the parking area on the right-hand side, which currently don't have any to meet the landscape standards of the Gateway Performance District. Uh, there's no changes to the parking because it was all built, um, actually above, above the standards at the time of original approval. Uh, we are not having any wetland, um, buffer impacts, although we're very close on the side. There's, uh, no concern for traffic as the numbers generated by this addition don't trigger any kind of study. It's twelve trips per hour peak on Saturday and weekday. And, um, I went through the staff reports. Don't have any real comments outside of maybe the sewer comment or sewer capacity comment in Loudon Road. Uh, we understand that there is, um, some capacity concerns regarding the line in that road. And, um, as outlined in the staff report, if the applicant could come up with a, uh, New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services sewer connection permit for the project and state that the sewer flow was already vetted or was already approved by the state, then, um, we could connect to the, we could connect this addition. At the time of construction in two thousand and eleven, um, a sewer connection permit was not needed because the use for the building didn't trip the stand, or the minimum requirements. So no such permit exists. Uh, however, in two thousand and eleven, the, um, City of Concord Planning Board, as well as the engineering staff, approved the overall building flow, uh, which this was part of. And so we see it fit that the, uh, well, that the flow is vetted, uh, for Loudon Road, or, yeah, for Loudon Road. Other than that, I don't have any other talking points to explain whether it's for the site or the staff report, but I'm open to any questions that the board may have.
So the, the sewer issue is a big one. So it's not a, a trivial issue with the, with projects and development up on the Loudon Road corridor. So the, the city is going to be very hard pressed to do anything, uh, prior to issuing a CO that affects the amount of sewer, uh, yeah, sewer waste going into that line. So as long as you understand that, I mean, you can build it and they may or may not come, but you, you, you've got an issue that you need to probably hammer up with the city as far as the two thousand and eleven approvals and, and whatnot beforehand. So we've got restaurants and stuff that are up there that are on hold because of it. Um, obviously, the mall development is a big one and isn't affecting this, I know, but other developments up there are, are really being affected because we don't have the capacity, so.
Hundred percent.
Just make sure you dot all the i's on it as far as the, as far as that goes right out of the gate.
Thank you.
Amanda.
So the intended use, um, not expected to be a laundromat?
Come, come again? Oh, no, it's, it's going to be retail use, but I can let Jeff explain.
Yeah, we haven't actually gone to market with it yet, but our anticipation, because similar buildings in, predominantly all of our ownership is in Bedford, um, a building this size, our retail brokers are targeting phone uses, stuff like that, so.
Okay. Okay, other questions from the board? Any questions from staff to go ahead and out?
No, I'll just call out that, um, this application, uh, while the minor site plan is not required for an architectural design approval, they went before the ADRC last month because their building permit will require.
Yep.
Um, so we kind of went through that process and that's part of the recommended approvals, um, because they, they already, as part of their application, they provided everything that would be needed for that review. Um, and then the, um, one of the staff comments, um, just so the board kind of knows that would involve some alterations to the site would be providing a pedestrian sidewalk to the, to the network, which is one of the conditions for approval.
Okay, and that's in, as a condition, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Any other questions? Do you remember the audience have any questions or concerns about this application? Nope? Okay, close the public hearing. Thank you very much for your testimony.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Again, in your packet of information here, we've got, uh, section eight, um, we'll use as our findings of fact, again, for, um, for this project is the information that you've seen in your packet, the testimony we heard here tonight, um, and the documentation that's been provided. Uh, so based on that, we've got a couple items on the docket. We've got eight point two is to grant architectural design review, again, based on Alex's comment on why, uh, for a minor site plan, um, for the proposed eighteen hundred and sixty-seven square foot addition and anticipated building permit in our performance district at, uh, three thirteen Loudon Road as submitted. Would someone like to make a motion to grant architectural design approval as outlined?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's made in second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Eight point three is to grant the waiver request below from the listed sections of the site plan regulations using the criteria listed in section thirty-six oh eight of the site plan regulations and the criteria, criteria in the RSA six seventy-four forty-four three E, section sixteen oh two twelve B to not provide a drainage study which includes a ten-year to twenty-five-year storm runoff estimate. Would someone like to make a motion to grant that waiver request as outlined?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Eight point four is to grant minor subdivision, minor, minor site plan approval for the proposed eighteen hundred and sixty-seven square foot addition at three thirteen Loudon Road and s, as subject to the following precedent and subsequent conditions, and those are outlined in precedent conditions, one, A through I, two, A through.
L.
L. Three, four, five, and six, and precedent and subsequent conditions, one through twelve. Would someone like to make a motion to grant, get all the way back, grant minor site plan approval as outlined?
So moved. Second.
Motion has been made in second. Any further discussion?
Just making sure that was one, one A through L, two A through W.
W, yes, sorry. I didn't say that, that I. Okay, that doesn't change motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. You're all set. Thank you very much.
We need to grant their subdivision.
Motion for the subdivision was a separate staff report.
Screwed me up, all these. Alright, and a report for the minor subdivision is in your packets under the separate piece. And that is, do, 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 do. Again, section eight.
There you go.
With our findings of fact, uh, is the information that you've heard here tonight. We're going to, uh, go to eight point two is to grant minor subdivision approval for the condominium subdivision of three eleven and three thirteen Loudon Road into two sub-unit lots as submitted, subject to the following precedent and subsequent conditions, and those are outlined in precedent conditions, one, A through R, two A through D, three, four, five, six, and seven, subsequent conditions, one through six. Would someone like to make a motion to grant minor subdivision?
So moved.
Minor subdivision approval as outlined. Got a motion?
Second.
And a second? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Now you're all set. Thank you very much. Alright, let's move on to item nine G. If we could read nine G into the record. See, how many of you in the audience thought we'd get to nine G at seven nineteen in the evening? Just saying, we're here for you. We're trying, lying. We're trying. Alright, let's move in. Let's read that into the record.
Uh, Nobis Group on behalf of Child and Family Services Realty Corporation and NH Scott requests approval for major site plan and architectural design review application, conditional use permit applications to allow an outdoor recreational facility, construction of fewer parking spaces than required, an alternative parking surface, dis, and disturbance to wetland buffers, as well as certain waivers from the site plan regulations for conversion of the site to the NH Scott headquarters at tax map lot thirty-two Z fifty-nine, addressed as two ten Bog Road in the open space residential district.
Okay, there's no application, uh, no determination of completeness component, so we will move right into the, uh, public hearing. Welcome to the table. If you guys could state your names for the record.
Hi, Morgan Dunson with Nobis Group, civil engineer on the project.
John Arnold from Warren Reno, attorney on the project.
Josh Hozier, president, NH Scott.
Uh, Stuart Anderson, principal with Alba Architects and past president of NH Scott.
Okay, uh, we're going to get a quick staff update. I'm stepping out of turn here, so if we could get a quick staff update on this and then we'll have you guys tell us about the project.
Uh, as you stated, Chair, the, the application went before the board last, um, month as consent for determination completeness. It was determined complete. Um, staff has reviewed the application at length, uh, recommending approval of the three conditional use permits other than the outdoor recreational facility, uh, recommend, rec, recommending further discussion on that. Note, and noting that there was one, uh, criteria that I happened to miss unfortunately in the staff report. So in section twenty-eight, five thirteen, uh, that goes through the approval criteria for, uh, campgrounds, youth camps, and outdoor recreational facilities, there is an item F that requires a separate and distinct buffer of one hundred feet be provided for outdoor recreational facilities in the RO district. And that is not on the site plan, so, um, if the board chooses to approve the conditional use permit for the outdoor recreational facility, that will need to be a condition of approval, that that, uh, required one hundred-foot buffer, um, be placed in order to meet the criteria.
Okay.
And then I have comments. I don't know if anyone wants me to, to go through these, but I have the comments from a member of Santa Cruz who is not here and, uh, asked me to relay his comments regarding access.
Okay, and we did get a couple of letters, late, uh, late letters that were sent to the board for review prior to the meeting, which I don't think are in the packet, right?
Correct. They were just received today, so I forwarded them.
Yep, thank you. Uh, we'll have you chime in after I hear from the applicant. So, why don't you tell us about the project? Again, I think, uh, I want to focus on staff's recommendation to not approve the, the, the conditional use permit as our kind of a crux of the issue. I mean, we can go through all the others as well, we can, it's your, your time, so I want to hear about the project in its totality, but I want to kind of get into the meat of it as the, as the primary issue.
Okay, why don't you lead us off? Um, one of the first questions we get when we start talking about this project is whether NH Scott's going to bring the Highland Games to Concord. Uh, and I just want to say at the outset that the answer to that question is no, the Highland Games are not coming to this property. Um, aside from that, I just want to give a brief kind of introductory overview of the project. Um, the, uh, property was formerly Camp Spalding. Um, as most of you know, or probably know, uh, that was a youth summer camp that hosted about two hundred kids over the course of the summer, um, operated from nineteen twenty-one until just a few years ago when it permanently closed. Uh, since that time, the property's been on the market. There've been, uh, at least two experienced real estate developers who have investigated the property. Both concluded that it wouldn't be feasible to redevelop it either for a residential, uh, development or for a kinda corporate retreat slash wedding venue. And when we take a look at the plans, you'll see there's a pretty big property, it's about fifty-eight acres, um, there's a lot of topography, um, there's a lot of wetlands, uh, and it's heavily wooded, and it's very kinda oddly configured, you can see the plan up on the map, it's really kinda two separate chunks of land with, uh, regular property lines. There's a main lodge building kinda centrally lo- centrally located on the property and several smaller, um, outbuildings scattered around, uh, throughout the site related to the camp. N H Scott, it's a charitable organization, it's been around since the mid nineteen seventies, uh, it's headquartered in Concord, and it needs a new home and a place to consolidate its operations. And this property came on the market, thought this was a great opportunity, would be a perfect fit for what it does and aligns with its mission. The plan would be to move the offices of the organization into the main lodge building and use the indoor and outdoor spaces in the property for a variety of different cultural and recreational uses, both indoors and outdoors. There isn't any new construction that's proposed, um, the only work would really be renovations of the existing buildings, interior work, and then, um, some site work, some expansion, and, uh, construction of new parking areas. The proposal that we have tonight, it takes a large vacant property that's been on the market for a number of years. It repurposes the existing buildings and existing facilities, and it preserves the open space in the R O district. We also think that it brings really incredible, uh, cultural, artistic, and economic benefit, uh, to the city of Concord and the surrounding area. I guess I'm gonna ask, uh, Josh and Stuart just to tell you in a few minutes about N H Scott, who they are, what they do, give you a better sense of them and how they'd use the property. Morgan will do a brief overview of the plans, and then, Mr. Chair, if you'd like me to jump into the conditional use permit.
Perfect.
On the recreational use, I'll do that.
Sounds good.
Excellent. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for hearing us tonight, so, as mentioned, N H Scott is a charitable organization. This is our fiftieth year, we're celebrating our fiftieth birthday, we're very excited about that, and for the past fifty years, we've been bringing history, culture, art, dance, music, language to New England through our Highland Games. Three days every September, the third week, we celebrate that up in Lincoln. As mentioned, that is not what we wanna do here, what we're, we're truly looking for is a cultural hub, a year-round center for Scottish dance, music, educational programs, and an administration, administrative headquarters for our staff, which is small. We've got three full-time employees and two part-time, and they split the time between work at home, but we do wanna have an office that they can access and use for business purposes on site. The Highland Games, like I said, will always stay in Lincoln, it's not gonna move here, we can't accommodate forty thousand people in the city, so we're not looking to do that at all. But the real crux of this is to find a year-round home for small, ongoing educational programs that we can run here in Concord. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have. Do you have anything to add, or?
Sir?
Well, I'll let Morgan talk to the site aspects, Mike.
Certainly.
Whoops, yeah, we do have questions, sorry.
Oh, yes.
So for the, the activities that you're bringing, do you think you'll have six hundred people?
See, that, we've never had an event off-site with that many people. The highest we've ever had is, was a Hogmanay that we hosted with the Dairy Field Country Club in the city of Manchester. We didn't even hit four hundred from that. That's a down-the-road number we'd like to achieve someday for a very limited event. So Hogmanay, which is a New Year's celebration, a family celebration in the afternoon with children and families coming to celebrate. A Beltane, which would be sort of a spring concert, and that's really all we've got right now for activities. Mostly, we're looking at small classes, um, Highland dance, which is little kids, um, under twenty. We're looking for pipe and drum education inside, again, twenty people maybe. So what we're doing on an ongoing basis is very small groups of people. Larger events would be limited to maybe four times a year, and that's a down-the-road, that'll take years for us to get to. So, yeah, that's, that's basically it.
And if I can, another part? So would that be, where do you think a lot of that activity would be happening?
In the, in the main lodge. So the idea would be for the educational programs to occur there, the athletics in the summer, so if we were to do like athletics, a big problem with the Highland Games is they're dying, they're dying out because there's no one to train new generations of athletes coming up. So what we're trying to do is build a program that we can foster and facilitate the next generation of athletes. So that's why we need the athletic field, so what we're talking about for those would be small groups of people learning new games. So stone lifting, caber toss, things like that. Those would be in the fields down below, the smaller block up there, anything, dancing, drumming, pipes, that would be inside the main lodge at the top of the hill. Yep, exactly.
Thank you.
Yep. Happy to answer any other questions, yeah.
Uh, just something that I neglected to say when I gave my update is, the project has been to the zoning board of adjustment for two variances. One of the variances was to allow two principal uses on the site, and those two principal uses are personal services and, and business use, which allows use of the main lodge for all of their indoor education, their, uh, their offices, their headquarters. Anything that they're doing in the lodge is already approved. Uh, and then the second principal use was for the outdoor recreational facility, so what is being, what the board is deciding on tonight is everything that's occurring outside. Everything that's occurring inside has already been approved.
Okay. Back to you.
Right. We will go on a little journey through the site, I will make this very brief, get to the right plans, sorry, there's a lot of sheets. Okay, nope, still not there yet. All right, here we go. This is the main entrance off Bog Road, right here, so there is an existing, around fifteen to eighteen-foot wide gravel driveway that does go, um, come off Bog Road and goes up the, up the hill. It's around seventy-five-foot elevation change from Bog Road to the top of the lodge. So what we're proposing to do is to improve the existing driveway, widen it to be twenty-four feet wide. We're going to improve, there is an existing culvert, um, right here for this, um, crossing. Uh, we are going to replace and repair the culvert in like-kind, and that's covered under the wetland permit for a S P N. And we, and I just also just wanna backtrack and say we did submit this to alteration of terrain, and we perceived, we're waiting for comments from them, and we ha- this has gone to a local advisory committee for the, uh, the So Cook, So Cook River. So that has all been taken care of. To the left is lot A. This parking lot is gravel, uh, and will, can hold, uh, a hundred and five spaces. Um, it is edged with sloped granite curbing along the entire edge of this, until you get to about right at this point, and that's where the sloped granite curb ends to allow for water to sheet flow from this parking lot into the infiltration basin that is located for this lot, for treatment, um, and infiltration to the groundwater. In these spots that don't have sloped granite curbing, there is, uh, wheel stops proposed, uh, concrete wheel stops, um, for cars not to go over. In this lot, B, um, has seventy-three spaces within this lot. And again, it also has, uh, sloped granite curbing along the edge, and along this edge right here are wheel stops. And then if we go up here is, um, I call it overflow grass parking, um, as you see, I did ask for multiple conditional use permits, for alternate surfacing of parking lots. And this parking lot is intended for overflow use only, and it's not really intended for parking during events. This is probably where events will happen, multiple activities may happen in this grassed area. But this grassed area can hold eighty-nine spaces. All right, and then all of the, um, parking lots are connected through interconnecting, um, gravel walkways that go up to the lodge. I believe those are eight feet wide of walkways, so then if we go up the lodge, there we go. Once you get up to the main loop at the top, um, the surface material transitions into a paved surface, and we are now providing twenty-two spaces at the top with eight ADA parking spaces and sidewalks to the main lodge for activities. Um, we are also proposing cistern tanks for, um, for fire, fire, um, not fire supply. Mitigation, thank you. Um, and in this area is where there, there is an existing fire pit, um, there's existing benches. This area already, we are not going to be cutting down any trees in this area, this is our, this already exists here. Um, and then if we move, oh, and I just wanna point out that the conceptual amphitheater location is no longer, um, part of this project. Um, it just hasn't been removed from the sheet, so that's not really a, a topic of discussion. Um, and then, I, we proposed a twelve-foot wide access road. Should we go through the site? Um, right now, it's an exist, it's an existing roadway, I wouldn't call it a roadway, it's an existing, uh, trail that is like wide enough to fit a car, I've driven through it multiple times. So the intention is to, um, treat the surface with gravel to allow for a secondary, um, egress for, in an emergency. Say, something bad happens, we need a second way for cars to get out of the site, this would be, the only use is for emergency access. And we are, it's not shown on the site plan, this plan particularly, but we are going to propose, um, gates at both the entrances to not allow public use to this access road, it's just a secondary egress way for, uh, an emergency to get off to, um, River Road. And then, I think it, and that's how it connects to River Road, there. For stormwater, we are going to be treating all of the impro- proposed impervious areas. Um, we have a grass swale along the, the new driveway, which gets collected into, um, multiple, um, infiltration ponds. You can see there's one here, and then it shoots out to this one down here. Uh, this lot is carried from the gravel from the swale that goes down to the infiltration pond and is slowly released to the wetland area, um, and it, the, it is treated, pre-treated. Uh, the pre and post flows are less than the existing flows. Um, for utilities, we are not proposing any new utilities, the site already has septic, it is already serviced by septic, water, and electric, and, what was the last one, gas. I did reach out to the private utilities, and they said, and they told me that they will continue to service the site as it has been. They don't consider this a change of use in their eyes for the demand of, uh, services that are needed for the site. So, um, and then, let's see, I can talk about the landscaping real fast, too. Oh, here's the light plan, so we are proposing, um, lights, light poles within the new parking lot areas and along the driveway. Um, and these, well, correct me if I'm wrong, these will only be lit up during larger events. It's not intended to be lit twenty-four, seven, three, sixty-five days a year, only for when they have the four to six events, um, for pedestrian safety. And we're also proposing some lights up top, again, I think the intention is to have an on-off switch that we can just turn it off when there is no one at the site. And the, for landscaping. So this athletic field, there's a lot of, um, like playground material, and there's an existing pool here that's going to be demoed. So the intention is to just loam and seed all the disturbed areas from removing the existing structures. Uh, we are adding a few, uh, trees to the site, I mean, this is a fully wooded area, um, so all the green areas, just loam and seed of disturbed area, and then we are providing trees, uh, within landscape area within the parking lots and around it as well. That might be all I have to say. Let's bring it back to the top. Yep.
Morgan, are you guys, any landscaping at the front of the building? Meaning shrubs, and, um.
At the front of the building? Um, at the front of the building is, it's just going to be a, just a deck right now. But I think the intention is to have, or are you talking about the front of the site?
Just, in the entrance to the lodge area, you're, I don't know if you were improving, that has not had any, um, use in the past.
I think the intention was, um, Terry had mentioned some kind of garden area in this, in this area.
It's, it's an odd, it's, it's an odd shape, so basically it slopes down to a fire pit, and there are existing benches there, and it looks like at one point there was some kind of mulch that was on the ground.
Yeah.
So we'd have to clean it up, but as far as like landscaping and planting more things, I, I don't believe so right now, we just wanna tidy it up. It's, it's a little dilapidated, there's a lot of dead fall that needs to be cleaned, but. But the main entrance there, no, there's a large deck and it's, it's just pavement out in front, so.
If I can, oh, here's the rendering of, uh, if you can see that, there's kind of a cute little rendering of what it would look like.
So that, that's already there, I mean, as far as existing with the trees that you're showing?
Yeah, there's lots of trees, I think I have, I did submit, um, some site photos, so I think that is shown on there.
Mr. Chairman?
The building looks like.
Yes, Dina.
Will you have any type of solar, um, uses there, or, um, composting toilets, or anything sustainable in your plan?
Unfortunately, the site isn't really suitable for solar, it is, it has a lot of steep slopes. The only area that would be, uh, an option is the athletic fields, which would be used for training athletes. So it's not a viable option. For composting toilets, I'm not sure, I think they'll just use the existing toilets that they have inside. Yeah.
I think I read private well, private septic, right?
Private well, private septic, yep.
Okay, other questions for that? All right, John?
Thank you. So the city determined that, uh, the outdoor activities that we're talking about here constitute a outdoor, uh, recreational facility in terms of a zoning classification, and privately owned, um, outdoor recreational facilities are allowed by conditional use permit in the R O district. We submitted a written narrative that goes through all the criteria, there's a lot of criteria and a lot of subsections, um, went through it all in detail. And as noted, the staff report, uh, indicates that all have been satisfactorily addressed except for the criteria that addresses whether the use will be compatible with the neighborhood. So that's what I'll focus the discussion on, if you want me to touch any of the other criteria or answer the questions, I will. The map that's up on the screen, uh, if you can scroll up a little bit, so you can see the legend. This is in your packets, uh, so there's nothing new here, but it gives an overview of kinda the activity areas on the site and how it's anticipated that each one of the areas, um, gets used. So, I'm not gonna go through them all, I know you have it, you've seen it, but just to give you a sense, um, like down towards the bottom of the map, there's one and two, those are just parking areas, there's nothing that's taking place there. Lot three is the overflow, uh, grass parking area, there'll be some activities there, um, like, uh, sheep bogs, Highland cow visits, things like that, some athletic trainings. The existing field is, uh, number four, the circle to kinda towards the, uh, towards the middle, and, you know, some little kinda pitch and putt golf-type activities uh, would happen there. Off on the right, that area, number five, that's an existing pond, so in the summertime, that might be used for things like fly fishing demonstrations, in the winter, it might be ice skating or curling, things like that. Number six in the middle, that's the main lodge area, um, we've heard a little bit about what's gonna happen in the lodge. Around the lodge, there's gonna be an area for like the fire pit that you heard, some gardening activities. Um, it's where the bandstand would be, um, if there's music going on, uh, just a gathering space. Circle number seven, kinda up to the left a little bit, that's just an existing ropes course that's already on the site, it would just be kept and probably periodically used. Um, number eight is an existing pavilion, um, the thought is for that in the wintertime to use it, uh, for a curling. Number eight is an existing pavilion. Um, the thought is for that in the wintertime to use it, uh, for a curling ring. And then number nine up on the kind of very top of the site, uh, separate section there. Those are existing athletic fields, uh, from the camp. So those fields are there. They would just continue to be used for kind of athletic training and events. At the outset, I just want to, uh, again, point out a distinction that I think's already been made once, but just on the types of uses, um, and activities that we're proposing for the site. On an ongoing basis, you know, a few days a week, maybe even daily, um, the thought is to have, uh, smaller scale, you know, cultural and recreational activities, things like dance lessons, book clubs, picnics. And, you know, those smaller group events that you heard from Josh about would have, you know, in the vicinity of 20 people. There'd be a few of those going on at a time, but that would be kind of the ongoing activity at the site on a daily basis. There may be an occasional event like a high tea or a dance that could draw more than 20 people, maybe up to 100 people for, you know, a big dance or a high tea, but that would be very infrequent. That's kind of one category of uses. What we see is the kind of day-to-day use. The other category of uses are these, uh, larger, um, family-oriented events that Josh mentioned, mainly to celebrate major Scottish holidays and cultural events. And what we're proposing is to have anywhere from four to six of those per calendar year at the site. And that's where we could see potentially attendance of up to 600 people, although that far exceeds what those events have drawn at other locations as they've been held for the past several decades. That's an aspiration. We've proposed that all of those events will be, uh, limited in duration, won't go beyond nine o'clock at night and only happen a handful of times a year. And I just want to distinguish between those two kind of categories of uses because I think most of the comments or all the comments in the staff report and in a couple of letters from, um, a butter's, uh, uh, focus primarily or wholly on those larger events, the four to six events with up to, you know, potentially 600 people. So turning to the C U P criteria at issue, um, we sincerely believe that the proposed use is, is compatible, uh, with the surrounding neighborhood. And there's a few points I kind of want to highlight on that. The first is that this is a large property and about 58 acres. You could see from the plans where we went through them, that's predominantly wooded. The facilities that are on the site right now are really, um, pretty centrally located. Where you see the activities taking place, all have significant natural, uh, separation in terms of distance and in terms of natural vegetation, uh, to separate them from the abutting properties. The second thing is that the property has historically been used for outdoor recreation. As I mentioned, Camp Spalding operated here for 100 years and it had upwards of 200 campers on a daily basis. The daily activities, again, that first category I mentioned a minute ago, the daily, you know, a group of 20 here, a group of 20 there, I think are going to be far less intensive and disruptive or even perceptible to a butters than having an operational camp with 200 kids on the property at any given time. I certainly acknowledge that, um, the larger events that we're talking about, the four to six events, they have 600 people, are going to be more people, probably more intensive than the summer camp was when it operated. But again, uh, those events are not rock concerts, um, they're not wild parties, they're family-oriented events, they're family-friendly. Uh, they're not late night, uh, hours, um, and intended not to be disruptive. They're very limited in terms of the frequency, uh, and the hours for those. The other thing that's critical here is that the events that we're proposing are being run by, um, a longstanding, uh, organization that has a proven track record of hosting these very same events at various locations throughout the state and having done so successfully. So for example, this past year, um, New Hampshire Scott held the annual Scottish New Year celebration at Pembroke Pines, just down the road. And that's a golf course. They have function facilities, but, um, it's surrounded by residential properties as well. There weren't any complaints, there weren't any issues. In your packet, you have a letter from Pembroke Pines, um, stating how well the event was run. New Hampshire Scott would be welcomed back to, you know, have those events in the future. So it was a great success. And they've had the same experience at a number of different venues throughout the state. You heard Dairy Field Country Club before, Tupelo Music Hall is another one. They've been holding these events, uh, for decades throughout the state at different locations. And the idea by acquiring this property is to, um, be able to host them at their own property. But the events themselves and the organization and the operation of those events is, is nothing new and it's something they have a lot of experience with. And bear in mind that, uh, they're best known for running the Highland Games up in Lincoln and that draws a crowd of about 40,000 people. There's a letter in your packets as well from Loon Mountain, um, you know, they've been doing that for years. And Loon Mountain, uh, sent a glowing recommendation in about how well, uh, they organize those events, how well they're run, how there haven't been issues with them. And that's an event that's, you know, 50, 50 times bigger than what's being proposed here. The other thing I want to point out is that when you're considering when a use, whether a use is compatible with the surrounding neighborhood, I think it's useful to look at what the other permitted uses of the property could be under zoning. And perhaps the most similar use to what we're, what we're proposing here that would be permitted by right on this property is an outdoor recreational facility that's publicly owned. And that's a distinction zoning ordinance makes. If this facility that we're proposing were owned by the city of Concord, state of New Hampshire, some public entity, it would be allowed by right. That suggests to me that the recreational use itself is compatible with the area. It's recognized by zoning to be compatible with the area. The only difference with what we're proposing is that it's privately owned as opposed to publicly owned. And I would suggest to you that that difference in ownership really doesn't change the impact of the recreational use or how well it fits within the neighborhood. Um, it's just a, a difference in ownership. Another use that's permitted by right on this property, uh, would be an equestrian center. And something like that would, I think, cause a much greater impact on the property and the neighborhood in many respects. There'd necessarily need to be quite a bit of land clearing to create pastures, to create riding rings. And equestrian centers could very easily have hundreds of people coming to them on a regular basis for horse shows or events, um, more frequently than the four to six times a year that we're proposing to have large crowds. And when you look around Concord, um, outdoor recreation is commonly interspersed with residential neighborhoods. You have Beaver Meadow Golf Course and Concord Country Club. Now, I know those are golf courses. They also host events and rent out for events, both indoors and outdoors. Both are surrounded by residential properties. There's Memorial Field. That has a 2,000-person capacity stadium. And it periodically holds large sporting events, high school championships, whatnot, where you have big crowds there. You have traffic coming in, you have P A systems for the games, uh, that generate noise. That's surrounded by residential properties. You have White Park. There's all sorts of different recreation that goes on there, skating and sledding in the winter, athletic fields in the summer. The black ice tournament that's held there has 700, uh, hockey players in it, in addition to spectators. That happens once a year. It's obviously an intensive event, but it's surrounded by residential uses, happens once a year and everything, um, everything works out fine. The staff report, um, raises and the objection letters from a couple of abutters raise potential concerns about noise, uh, and traffic in terms of compatibility with the neighborhood. And we've looked very closely at those issues. We know their concerns. We've met with the neighbors. And we've tried to be responsive to this. We've submitted a professional sound study that you have in your materials and a professional traffic study that you have in your materials. The greatest concern that we've heard so far about the noise has been, um, you know, music and outdoor bagpipe band, uh, which are traditionally thought to be very loud. And so what we did is we sent out a sound expert just this past winter, um, to do some town, sound tests to see how much noise would actually be generated by this. It was the middle of winter. A bagpipe band could not perform in the middle of the winter. And so what we did was, uh, we took recorded bagpipe music, set up speakers where the band would be set up on the property, turned the music up to 100 decibels, which is the typical level of, of a, um, bagpipe band. And then the sound expert walked all around the property, took 10 or 11 different sound readings at various points throughout the property and along property lines. The report is in your property. It concluded that the, uh, the pipe band was barely audible, if audible at all, at the closest surrounding property lines. Certainly was not an unreasonable noise or excessively loud. And the, the volume was in the range of, I think, 40 to 50 decibels, the actual numbers in the report. But that's lower than a normal conversational level, um, at property lines. As for traffic, Vanessa and Associates did a study concluded that the existing traffic infrastructure is adequate for the use. They made some minor recommendations on how to coordinate and handle things, um, which N H Scott is going to implement, but there weren't any issues or concerns there. And the final point I guess I'd like to make is that, uh, you know, you do have two letters of objection from a couple of the butters. We're mindful and we're respective of those. Uh, you also in your packets have over half a dozen letters of support, not only from other direct abutters, but also community leaders. Representative Custer submitted a letter, the executive director of Intown Concord submitted a, a letter, both of them touting the, uh, the cultural, artistic, and economic benefits that they believe this project will bring to the city of Concord. And we really believe that's true. Um, we've spent a lot of time with the neighbors at neighborhood meetings, uh, meeting with community leaders, soliciting feedback in order to put a lot of thought into this project. And New Hampshire Scott's history of running these organizations throughout the state for the past several decades shows that they're committed to doing so respectfully and responsibly. So we do see this as a great opportunity and a great fit for New Hampshire Scott, but we also see it as being a great opportunity for the city of Concord and the community. And we do think that for all of these reasons, the use is compatible, um, with the surrounding neighborhood. There are a number of comments in the staff report, uh, suggesting some mitigation measures and some can, potential conditions of approval to address. Some of those are ones that we've already proposed. Others are okay with us. Others are more problematic that we'd like to discuss, but I'll wait to get into those until, um, you're ready to do so.
Perfect. I, I don't know, I'm not a sound engineer, I'm not a sound expert, but it seems to me that, that need to have, I've heard from, I heard from three people that just know, know how to get ahold of me that said, "I don't want to have, hear bagpipes ringing down in my neighborhood. I don't want to hear this. I don't want to hear that." So the, the bagpipe issue to me was the one that stuck out right out of the gate. Would you be, uh, would you be opposed to, uh, doing some live testing, putting six or 10 people up on the hill where they're going to be playing to test it, to see what people are going to hear? I don't, again, I don't know the sound difference between a speaker and a real bagpipe. I know I can hear bagpipes at the beach when I'm at the beach and the guy plays them on Sunday morning. I hear them and he's a hell of a lot farther away than the abutting neighbors are. So I, I'm concerned about that from a, from a, you know, from a quality of life perspective. That was my big concern.
Yep. And we heard that concern loud and clear from neighbors and, and thought of it as well. And that's why we had the sound study done. Uh, Jerry Dwyer from Boston Sound Works, the company that did the, uh, sound test is here tonight and he can probably speak to that.
Okay.
The thought was that the, the test that he did, he believed that that was very representative of what a live, uh, band would, uh, would generate. But I'll let him speak directly to it. If you'd like him to do that now or?
No, we can do that afterwards. I'm sure nobody's going to have a question about bagpipes when we get to the public's, the public testimonies, but just in case, I want to hear that after the fact. Anything else from you guys? Questions from, Dina?
In terms of attendance, is, um, how do you draw your attendees? Is it, is it open to the public or is it a membership type of the?
Both. We're open to the public. We accept everybody, but we do have membership as well. So people that wish to be a part of N H Scott, the organization, but, you know, would like to maybe do more, they become members. But no, average people can come, anybody can come and we welcome everybody to our games, so.
You could call the lowland game since it's on Bog Road.
This will be on the low, yeah. Swamp games, yeah.
No charge for that little ditty. So, uh, okay, I'm going to have you guys, oh, yeah, go ahead. Oh, you're not done. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I just had a couple more things I wanted to touch on, but I wanted to get the his C U P out of the way. In the staff report, um, so I submitted, um, around, uh, a bunch of waiver requests. So there are two waiver requests I did specifically want to point out and, um, have a discussion with you guys about. The first one was for section 1809, parking lot markings and signage. Did, I believe I have partial support from staff on this one. Correct me wrong, Emery, but, um, I did ask for a waiver from this for the, um, gravel parking lots to not, um, stripe them or provide signage within these gravel lots. And the reasoning for that is because these lots are not, um, open to the public. They're only going to be used during, during two major events. Four to six events, there we go. So right, right here you can see I have them shown as striped just to show you, prove that I actually have the correct amount of parking spaces available. However, I don't have any signage and I don't have any, um, pavement markings, um, within gravel. Because as you know, if you paint gravel, it will brush away or drive away or, um, that. So, um, the request is to not allow, to not provide, uh, markings or signage within these two gravel lots. And another thing to bring up is that during larger events, they, they will have traffic attendee volunteers guiding people to park in parking spaces. So it's not intended for people just to willy-nilly park anywhere that they want.
And, and that was staff's concern. I didn't, and if you put that in there, I missed it. I didn't see anything about traffic control. But, uh, staff would be supportive of granting that waiver with condition that, uh, appropriate traffic control attendees.
For event parking?
Yeah, for event parking is there so that.
Remember that when we get to that, if we get to that.
And let's see, the second one was for, uh, section 1810 driveway widths. This one is, uh, in regard to this, uh, emergency access driveway, which I only show as a 12-foot wide, um, driveway. I did meet with, um, the Fire Marshal Paul Seroy on Monday and we did go over this again in length. And I just haven't emailed you, Emery, sorry about that. So we did go over it and, um, he was fine with the width as long as it is intended to be a one-way traffic. The intention is not for a fire truck to drive through this path. He wanted to make that clear. That's not intended for that. It's intended for if the road gets blocked down or, you know.
So did, did fire have any comments regarding navigating the site from Bog Road?
From Bog Road?
From Bog Road, if they came up Bog Road from Manor Station, turned right into the site. Nope, no issues with fire access around the, the facility?
Nope, yeah. And I already did, I did fire truck turns. I just didn't submit it. I showed them to Paul at our meeting. Fire, the fire tower truck is able to turn through all of the parking areas. And I actually did do a fire truck analysis on this road and technically, yes, a fire truck can go through. It's just kind of steep back there. Um, and.
Had no turning issues with coming off of Bog Road?
And what was the second? Oh, so this is, it's an existing road and we are proposing to tie the 12-foot gravel access road. And this is to not take down any trees. This width is designed so that there will be no tree clearing within this area. And to keep the, the foliage, um, the existing foliage there to not, as you can see right here, we do get to a pinch point between the sites. So we, we wouldn't want to have to take down more trees to, um, widen up this driveway road that is only used for, um, in emergency.
Okay. So I want to ask a couple of questions, but I want to ask about the 100-foot buffer. So how does the 100-foot buffer handle the one lot, since it's all one lot? Does the 100-foot buffer get tweaked in the, in the choke zone there?
That would be up to the planning board if they wanted to condition it as such.
Okay. Signage? Any street signs?
Street signs.
Like, welcome to New Hampshire Scott, I mean, something out by the street?
Yep. Um, I don't have it shown here, but yes, I, that is something that is on my list to add. There will be, there's an existing YMCA sign that is located right here. And I believe the intention is to just put a new sign where, um, those.
Okay, going to light it? No? Preference, no?
No.
Okay.
If it's lit now, probably not.
It's, I don't believe it is.
It's in the, internally illuminated signs are not allowed in residential districts. And I'm not even sure if externally is. I'd have to check. But they'll have to get a sign permit and comply with all of that.
And then last question is snow removal. So going to be accessible all year?
Yep. So, um, I have a note on here that says, uh, lot A.
Snow removal, sorry, snow storage.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. So the driveway will be maintained throughout the year and as well as the gravel parking lots and snow will be stored in this grass, the grass lot area. parking lots and snow will be stored in this grass, the grass lot area.
New Hampshire Scott's is a nonprofit?
Correct.
So nonprofit status, okay. All right, anything else? Counselor Todd?
Yeah, thanks if I may. There's an item highlighted in the report that says it is unclear if the accessible parking spaces meet all the federal accessible parking requirements. Is there an update on that or is that?
I think that was for the ADA stuff that's up by the, that's up by the top, which I think it does.
I think that, yeah, I think I just need to add more spot grades. I think that was the comment.
Okay. And that's, so that's, but you've got that incorporated in there, is that what you're saying? Or you're going-
Yep. So we have ADA, we have ADA spots. This, let me go to the gray. There we go. So, yep. The slopes within the ADA spots don't exceed 2% any direction and we have accessible sidewalk and crosswalk right here.
Okay. Thank, yeah, thank you.
Okay. Good. All right, we're going to have you step back. We will have you come back up, so just take good notes and we'll have you come back up after we hear some public testimony. Okay, so this is a fun part of the meeting with public testimony. If anybody would like to come up and speak to this application, please come on up.
And while that gentleman is coming up to the desk to speak, I just wanted to follow up with one item regarding the waiver of driveway width. And unfortunately, so staff is saying to deny it because it's not a waiver. Driveway width reduction is only allowed through conditional use permit. It's not allowed as a waiver, so.
So is that the one that's identified as a non-valid waiver in our packet?
It is.
Okay. What number is that?
It's, if we get down to the conditions, it's 8.4.
8.4. Just wanted to make a note here. Okay. Okay. Welcome to the table. If you could state your name for the record?
Certainly. My name is Edward W. Smith. I live at 145 River Road. I'm an abutter in one of the primary affected areas as far as the abutters go.
Think you sent a letter in?
I did, yes. And I would like to apologize to the board for my timing. I'm sorry that I didn't submit it in a timely manner. I would ask that you do review the letter because I did make some good points. And frankly, I'm not a very good speaker, so much of which I said in the letter.
Just, just for the record.
It's not going to fly tonight.
Yeah, for the record, the, the staff does a great job of turning those around. As soon as they get them, they send them to the board. And we know that you're, you had the best intentions to send it week ago, two weeks ago, but it comes in this morning along with another one, so we get them every, every month.
I'm going to have you meet my wife.
Yeah.
That was great.
So tell us, tell us your, your, your position on this project.
Okay. Thank you. I'm going to recommend that you do not grant the conditional use permit for this property. And I have three main areas that I'd like to point out. First of all, I believe it goes against the city of Concord in total. The city of Concord has two very pressing issues that it has to deal with on a daily basis. One is the lack of housing that we have. It's, it's a crisis and I'm certainly, that you are brought, you know, that's brought to your attention every day. That is an area that tomorrow you could build a house there. It might be a tiny house, it might be a McMansion, but tomorrow you could build a house and somebody could be living there. We'd be walking away from the number one priority in the city of Concord if we allowed this. That would be taken off the table. Number two is finances. We, this is, it's a nonprofit. I don't know this, but my guess is if I was them, I would file not to pay taxes on the property. I'm going forward with the assumption that they will not be paying taxes and I, as long as every, as well as everybody else here, will now be supporting this project because they won't be paying taxes, I will. So I think it goes against the housing needs in the city and I think it goes against the financial needs of the city. I think it goes against the neighborhood. I believe it's going to dramatically change the character of the neighborhood. Putting 600 people in an event where we had singing, laughing children with a bonfire, no. Liquor license that they're talking about, that's not family friendly. No, I'm sorry, it isn't. And the last thing, and I promised to get off of the stage here, it goes against me as an abutter. The noise issue, 600 people, the lighting, it's not going to happen without lights. And as a, my resale property, I can't bring a real estate agent in there and say, "Look, I've got this great thing going up there." They're not going to, it's not going to sell. I mean, the people, the word is going to get around that it's going to make my, my, my property values drop dramatically. And so, so honestly, I please ask you not to approve the conditional use permit for the property.
How long have you lived at the property?
10 years.
10 years. So you, you weren't there when Cam Spalding was there?
No, I wasn't.
Okay. Questions from Smith? Thank you very much for your testimony.
Great. Thank you so much for having me.
Yep.
I think just, just a note.
Yep.
Did we hear that this property was evaluated for housing and it didn't fly? Was that, somebody said that?
Somebody had said that in one of the letters, that there's a reason that they haven't been able to sell it, but it's not, I mean, nobody knows. Maybe it wasn't sold because it was too highly priced. Who's next? Somebody's got to want to come up. One, two. Good evening. If you could state your name for the record?
Certainly. My name's Leon LaFrenia. I reside at 141 River Road. I've been there for some 38 years. I was there when the camp was operational and in fact had been involved with the expansion of the camp as I was set on the Concord Board of Directors for Child and Family Services at the time and, and assisted with the fundraising and the design of the camp expansion at the time. I am a direct abutter of this subject property. As some of you may know, I've enjoyed a long career in the field of city planning and land use here in New Hampshire. I've served for many years as a Director of Planning and Community Development for a large municipality in the state and also served on the City of Concord Planning Board. And for approximately 20 years, I have been supposed as chair. So I have a sense of what you're-
Welcome back to the room.
Thank you.
Hasn't changed much, right?
So as a result of my volunteer work, formal training and work experience, I'm quite invested in sound planning practices and the importance of the planning board's role in guiding the city's future. It is through this lens that I offer you my comments this evening. I did submit a letter that I believe you all have that identifies in greater depth my concerns regarding the proposal before you. There are several requests associated with this proposal, including a major site plan, four and perhaps five upcoming, if another one come, conditional use permit requests, and multiple waivers of regulation requests. Significant number of my questions and concerns have already been identified in the staff report. That comprehensive document provided a, I think, a good picture of what this project's all about. Recognizing that you have other people to speak and a full agenda, I'm going to try to make it, to be as brief as possible and summarize my comments in my, in my letter as opposed to go over those in detail. So the primary focus this evening as a result will be the conditional use permit request to utilize the property as an outdoor recreation facility, along with the associated site plan issues. To be granted a CUP for an outdoor recreation facility, the applicant must demonstrate compliance with each of the CUP requirements as well as additional development standards specific to the use. Operation of such a facility would also be subject to the city of Concord noise ordinance. The planning board must find that all of the applicable criteria have been met in order to grant a CUP. Example being 28-9-4B4D of the zoning ordinance, which stipulates that the planning board must find that the use will be compatible with the neighborhood and with adjoining and adjoining uses in the area in which it is located. This requirement is very specific. And while the term compatible in itself might appear discretionary depending on perspective, the zoning ordinance specifically defines the nature of off-site impacts that govern if a use is to be considered as compatible. Section 28513 of the zoning ordinance identifies development standards and buffer requirements for the establishment of an outdoor recreation facility use. These standards specifically address noise, odor, light, and dust as being impacts that influence compatibility. The standards specifically limit noise generated that is audible from any dwelling not on the property and also limit any odor, light, or dust perceptible beyond the property boundary. In this case, the applicant has not demonstrated that these standards will be met. When noise, lighting, buffers, and traffic have been identified as concerns, the response has been that the size, that being smaller than the 35,000 to 40,000 attendees of the New Hampshire Highland Games, and frequency of the proposed event should serve to minimize the impacts. Concluding that the off-site impacts of events with 600-plus attendees will be minimal compared to the Highland Games is hardly an appropriate comparison, especially when one recognizes that this proposal is for an event center that would be one of, one of, if not the largest, event centers of its kind in the Concord region. When I inquired from the New Hampshire Scotts of prohibition against amplified music, bull horns, and public address systems would be considered, the response was, "That is what we do." Much like the response received when asked about a liquor license, we were told that the consumption of alcohol at their events was a cultural norm and therefore an important component of their events and celebrations. The message appearing to be that no flexibility exists regarding these aspects of their use. In the case of noise, the applicant's own sound test demonstrates that a single bagpiper is more than just perceptible at the property boundary, let alone what might be anticipated by a full band of bagpipers and drummers. I commend the applicant for their attempt to quantify the impact of noise generation through their sound test. Conduct on February 4th, I was present that day and observed both the sound generated via a recording as well as later by a single bagpiper, which were each clearly audible from my property. In the report, Mr. Dwyer identifies that the sound levels that he recorded that day of the solo piper were only slightly less than a band, than the band recording. This calls into question his conclusion that the sound levels of full occupancy will be acceptable. Surely the sound level generated by a full band comprised of multiple bagpipes and drums, which were absent during the test, playing for 600 or more revelers, will exceed the level of a solo piper with no audience. While I appreciate their effort to account for potential noise impacts, the sound levels resulting in Mr. Dwyer's conclusions do not reflect the levels anticipated in a real-world experience. In fact, contrary to the conclusions of the consultant, the result of the sound test would appear rather to confirm that the anticipated noise generated will exceed the prohibited levels identified in both the Concord noise ordinance as well as the zoning ordinance. The development standards identified in the zoning ordinance specifically state that outdoor recreation facilities may not generate noise that is unusually audible from any dwelling not on the property. With regard to buffer requirements, it's, it's been noted that the, the project as submitted and the plans as submitted do not reference the minimum buffer of 100 feet around the use. This is of particular interest to me given that the property, I'm up in the corner where the connector is and probably kind of wraps around my property there. And the, the visual and sound impacts from the athletic fields are going to be readily apparent in my yard and at my house. Although, although not specifically identified on the site plan as a buffer, the applicant does make mention, I give him credit, for the separation between uses on the larger of the two portions of the lot. However, no mention is made nor acknowledgement of the requirement to buffer the heavy athletic training area. Shouldn't this be reflected on the plan and how might that be treated in a, in a manner that meets the ordinance requirements? A separate question regarding buffer requirements relates to the original construction of the structure depicted as the pavilion. When originally approved as a site plan amendment by the planning board, a planting plan for screening and buffer purposes was required as a component of that approval. Due to inappropriate installation and maintenance, those plantings did not survive. Should not those plantings that were originally required as part of the approval be reinstalled? As for lighting, as depicted on the lighting plans L 1.0 and L 1.1 of the plans set, there is no lighting shown for the pavilion building, the connector drive or Woods Road, so-called, and the original camp location noted to be used as an athletic field. Absent any lighting shown, can I assume there is no intent to provide lighting in these locations? Each of those locations, as I note, is readily observable from my property. The applicant has, on numerous occasions, represented the former occupancy of 200-plus campers, supported 200-plus campers, even though after it's been pointed out that the maximum number occupancy was 125 per city approvals. Representations on the public record by former child, former operator of Child and Family Services, as well as in inventory available camping spaces, each reflect a maximum of 125. It's also been confirmed by the administration of the interim operator, Greater Nashville YMCA, that at no time did their occupancy exceed allowed numbers. The discrepancy may on the surface not appear significant. However, the applicant continues to inflate the former occupancy by some 60% as a justification for their claim that the new use of the property is not unlike the former use. This argument suggests that the occupancy by a maximum of 125 youth campers with strict quiet hours, a voluntary condition of approval for a 200-foot buffer, not 100 as required by the ordinance, and agreed upon amplification, amplified noise restrictions for eight weeks out of a 52-week year, somehow analogous to the impacts of a 52-week per year operation, including various weekly indoor and outdoor trainings, classes, and band practices, and several small events with 100 people, as well as planning for six major events with 600-plus adults with liquor license, athletic demonstrations and competitions, as well as outdoor live and recorded music. In summary, I've just been waiting for that. I believe the representatives of the New Hampshire Scott Organization should be good people who have certainly appeared sincere in their efforts to help me understand the nuances of the proposal. Nothing in my testimony this evening should indicate otherwise. I can understand why this property would be attracted to, attractive to them for the uses proposed. However, the fact remains that the entirety of those uses are not compatible with a residential neighborhood. Seeking approval for a conditional use permit is by design a heavy lift. Uses permitted only by a CUP are not automatically considered as appropriate within all locations. A use permitted only by the assurance of a CUP differs from a use permitted by right, owing to the fact that the ordinance recognizes that these uses can generate impacts that would render them incompatible in some locations. This is why special conditions to ensure compatibility are specifically defined by the ordinance. I agree with and wholeheartedly support the conclusions of the planning staff report, which states that in this case, the approval criteria are not satisfactorily addressed regarding their request for a privately-owned outdoor recreation facility. The applicant has not satisfied their burden to demonstrate that compliance with the City of Concord noise ordinance and the zoning ordinance standards for development of an outdoor recreation facility will or can be achieved. The impacts associated with a major event center, including traffic, lighting, and amplified voices, music, and revelry would absolutely have a detrimental effect on the quality of life currently enjoyed by the neighborhood. Without significant modifications to proposed programming and strict restrictions to protect abutters from off-site impacts, it would not appear that a reasonable application of the city's standards and ordinances would permit a finding of compatibility by board. In closing, I leave you with this. In your role as a planning board, it is important, and to us as abutters, critical to recognize that the required standard of review in the CUP process is not how well does this location meets the needs of the applicant, but how well, rather, how well does the proposed use and its associated impacts fit the neighborhood. I thank you for your time and service to this community. I have some sincere appreciation for your roles and all the baggage that comes along with that. So I'm available for any questions that you might have.
Questions from Mr. LaFrenia? What's, you know, ideally, it's a large property. 57 acres, it's, it's developable whether, you know, it's not been developed in the past or not, but with zoning changes and the need for housing, you know, not putting one house on there, but putting 15 houses on there, 16 houses on there, going to the buffer, getting to the point where you've got a development that comes in and snakes in through the property and somehow gets to the second piece. You know, it's got to be used for something. The not-in-my-backyard mentality is, I get it, but it, it's a 57-acre lot and there's this precious little of it left in the city. So it's going to be developed at some point. I'd love to get some feedback. I'd love to get some feedback on what the ideal development is to that particular property.
Sure, that's an excellent point and one that bears fleshing out, if you will. The property is large, it's almost fifty-eight acres in size. However, interestingly enough, it is encumbered by steep slopes and wetlands over specific portions. And interestingly, those steep slopes and wetlands, especially to the west, forced development, along with its commensurate impacts, to the eastern boundary where most of the residential properties are. So that's something that I think is relevant to the conversation about putting in a use that is going to have a lot of off-site impacts. With regard to housing, I bought my house from the person who owned that land, who was a real estate developer. And so I, this was before the camp acquired it. And I was fully aware that, you know, that property could be developed for housing. And this is a point, since we're talking almost forty years ago, where housing wasn't quite the issue that it was today, or the lack thereof. So, but it still was something that, you know, I gave thought to. I know a number of my neighbors would not agree. But for me, housing developed within the constraints of the existing ordinance structure would be entirely appropriate. And when I say the existing ordinance structure, it takes, I'm taking into account the various encumbrances on the lot, the slopes and wetlands, the fact that it is outside of the urban growth boundary, the fact that it is not serviced by any municipal utilities. Those, all of those conditions are such that we're not going to see a condo development or apartment buildings back there. Single-family homes, in my mind, would be entirely consistent with the nature of the neighborhood.
Let me ask you this, if people were walking by on the woods road, would you see them from your property, or is enough tree buffer, not hear them, but see them?
Oh, I definitely would see them, because I'm kind of at that pinch point. The other interesting aspect is that this property was at one time all owned by a professor of electrical engineering of some renown. He was at Tufts, I believe. He was Austrian by descent, and he actually planted most of the, he had a great interest in botany and planted most of the forest through there. It's all red pines, most of which are either dead or dying. And so that tree buffer is unfortunately very, it's limited and it's losing its effectiveness. There's not a lot of understory, there are some white pines in there, but yes, there's a clear view.
Okay, any other questions for Mr. Dwyer? Thank you very much for your testimony.
Thank you.
Okay, who's next? Come on up. Welcome to the table, if you could state your name for the record.
My name is Wendy Landon. I am the homeowner and resident of 149 River Road in Concord. I'm a direct abutter. My property is directly in the line of sight from and within earshot from what the plan refers to as the main lodge and fire pit area. NH Scott has made a commendable effort in communicating with neighbors, fielding our concerns about their plans. With the understanding that NH Scott will continue to work with the neighbors and preserve the natural wooded environment of this property, I am testifying in support of approval of their plans. The precedence has been set for this property to be used for functions when that main building was built. I have lived at this property since nineteen ninety-eight. I have been there during the camp. I was at home during the sound test. I believe that the presence of NH Scott will be an asset to the neighborhood. They are going to be renovating a property which, since the camp closed, has become run down and is actually often vandalized. Further, this would allow an important cultural nonprofit to grow while remaining based in Concord. Thank you.
Questions? Thank you very much. 149?
River Road.
River Road, so on the other side.
No, we're right against two.
Okay, okay.
Right, right.
Amanda?
Question about the sound, you said you were at home when the sound test was done. Can you give me any feedback about that?
Yep, so I could hear it while I was outside. I would say it was comparable and, to my judgment, considerably preferable to the sounds of children screaming in terms of how loud it was. I could barely hear it when I was inside of my house, depending upon what part of the house I was in.
Deena?
How far from the property line is your home? I can see here where you are the abutter, but is this your backyard? How close in this area is your home?
So I've got about three acres. Gosh, we're probably maybe, from our property line, it's maybe another half acre or so to the actual building, to the actual main building.
Okay. Other questions? Thank you very much for your testimony.
If you did not, could you sign in, please?
Oh, yeah, Eric Snodgrass, 149 River Road.
Right in front of you, this is a sign-in sheet.
I signed in, I did. And I just want to reiterate, I think you had a great point about what we would like to see there. When we moved in twenty-five years ago, we had, the river is one big neighbor and the camp was the other big neighbor. It is, when it's not a camp, the camp used it eight weeks out of the year and then a couple of other weeks here and there. It's a nature preserve, I mean, it's just beautiful land. And it's been dying for the last five years as it's been abandoned. So the risk of it staying empty is worse than something going in. Houses would remove any access, would remove the wildlife atmosphere there, would become private and closed off. The NH Scots offer an opportunity to turn this into something while maintaining the wildlife nature, the wild nature of it. And that's what we look forward to, is somebody taking over and becoming a steward of the land and growing something there.
Okay, thank you very much for your testimony. Who's next? Nobody jumping up? No? Last chance? All right, why don't we have you guys come back, the applicant come back up? Sit in the big chair.
Yes, big board chair.
So why don't, if you don't mind, John, I'll just hit the sound engineer right out of the gate. So you heard a little bit more sound stuff, just pull yourself a little closer to that mic.
Of course.
Tell us, I don't need, I really don't want to hear the down-and-dirties of how sound engineering works, just like talking to a traffic engineer. I love them and they're part of the deal, but holy heck. I just, I need to understand if there's a difference between a live bagpipe and a bagpipe music that's piped into a, to a, to a microphone, to a speaker.
For the record, my name is Jerry Dwyer, I'm an engineer with Boston Soundworks. We've worked for decades with New Hampshire Highland Games and Highland Games in Massachusetts, in Maine, in other places. I do it professionally, it's what I do. They came to me, came to our company and asked that we do an assessment of the impact of specifically bagpipes and pipe music rather than tin whistles or anything else. Because of the time of year, it was impractical to get a live pipe band there. Bagpipes are susceptible to cold weather, they're easily damaged. So we decided the best option was to reproduce bagpipe music at a similar level to if a live band was marching by. Drums, pipes, the works. We also had a single piper, a solo piper, who also performed. We amplified the music to the level that we would experience at something like the New Hampshire Highland Games, where it was in excess of a hundred decibels, which was way above what most people can tolerate. I think it registered a peak at something like one hundred and seven decibels. Our piper, who is a professional piper, agreed that this was louder than any pipe band he had ever marched with. And we were doing it deliberately to push the envelope. There was heavy snow cover on the ground, which helps to, it helps the sound levels to travel further. And it was middle winter, so there was no foliage on the trees. We did our first measurements at the lodge site and then progressively down that trail towards the choke point at the neighbor's boundary. My measurements at the neighbor's boundary were comparable with what I would measure in a library. Something in the mid-forty degree, forty, forty-five decibel range, sorry. And we were hearing the rustle of the branches overhead and birds louder than the music. We had to strain to hear. I actually, at one stage, had to go quite a distance back up the pathway to make sure the music was still playing. It was. And ours, as I presume you have in your folders, there have been printouts done of the various sound levels we recorded at several points. I think there's something like a dozen in total. That's it in a nutshell. The levels were recorded with what's called A-weighting on the instrument. A-weighting means that it compensates for our human brain. When we hear one piper or a hundred pipers, our brain compensates to create an average. And this is what A-weighting means. It's used extensively throughout the audio industry. C-weighting is the other one. That would be like if you had to assess the sound of a generator that's constantly running at a fixed volume, or the sound of the engine of a ship that's constantly running. Whereas A-weighting is closer to what the human brain hears. And this is why there's very little difference between one piper and an entire pipe band when measured at about twenty paces, which is what I did.
But, Gary, any difference between a recorded pipe band and a live pipe band?
Between the recorded and live, in volume, no. Apart from the fact that they're marching and you have to thump, thump, thump with the marching.
So in volume, no, but is there, I mean, is there resonance, I mean, just something?
There isn't resonance. These were live recordings of the world championship. So it was very realistic of what you would anticipate standing watching a large pipe band go by.
Okay. Great, thank you very much. All right, so you heard some public testimony, nothing, I don't think, that wasn't in the packet or new. Any follow-up comments, questions, concerns, additional info?
I guess just a couple of things. There was a remark that I think New Hampshire Scott had said no to, you know, ruling out bullhorns or loudspeakers or anything like that. And that's not the case. The intent is not to amplify any music, to use any bullhorns or speakers just to have live music that's there. On the lighting, there's a question about lighting, the fields or the access road or the pavilion, there's no lighting proposed there, the intent is?
That was the question regarding the woods road where it's going through. Okay, so no lighting in that area?
No lighting there. Couple of comments, I think, now from staff as well on the hundred-foot buffer. That really isn't an issue for most of the site. There's one place, the existing athletic fields, those, not a hundred feet of vegetation between the property line and those fields, that's all existing. Everything else, there's more than a hundred feet around the rest of the perimeter of the property. I would point out, though, that the ordinance, with respect to this buffer, it expressly prohibits campsites, buildings, or parking facilities. It says that the board may permit trees and utilities and can allow certain outdoor recreational facilities within the buffer provided that improvements are compatible adjacent land uses. So my point just being that with that field, it's existing, there's no change proposed there. It's not going to comply with the hundred-foot buffer, but I think it's probably either grandfathered or permitted under the terms of what the ordinance allows in a buffer in the first place.
So I had written down a question regarding the old plantings that were approved as part of a prior approval. It's more of a staff question, but it sounds like some issues with some of the red pines on the property now. Any planting, I know you've got a landscape plan for the areas around the parking lot areas, but any other pieces or parts that need to be addressed from that perspective, from your standpoint? As far as tree coverage and whatnot?
Would you be willing to replace them?
Yeah, we have no problem with that. As a matter of fact, we've got two fencing quotes to for along that road, just as weighing our options. So, you know, if there's real concern and this becomes a real problem, we're already exploring fencing that area.
Fencing the area.
The road along that pinch point to keep people away from properties, we're not sure if it's necessary in terms of planting. We have no problem planting trees if we need to, that's fine.
Okay. I don't think from a staff perspective, it's such an old plan. I mean, I know we've gone back to people that have planted in, from a landscape plan, that didn't live and we made them go back and redo it, but I don't think there's any requirement to do that now.
No, at this point it would be a moot point.
Okay, any other questions, Deena?
Yeah, a point came up about public access. Would there be, outside of the planned events, would there be access to the grounds? Or any attraction to the grounds?
A number of the abutting neighbors use the property, they walk the property, they walk their dogs, they ride their horses, we have no problem with that. It's connected to rail trails and trails that are through the woods, we don't have a problem with that either. We don't want people parking in our area, so those will be needed. But as far as people that live nearby, certainly they could.
So I know there was an access gate on the road, the woods road, but you'd still be able to walk around it or, okay.
So there wouldn't be like a museum or anything there that would be an attraction?
No, no, we don't have a museum.
You're giving them an idea, though.
As you say, yeah. Would you like to join our board, because we're always looking for more volunteers, so.
Thank you. This may have been covered earlier, if it is, if it was, I apologize. But in terms of the fire truck and emergency access, was there also testing done in terms of access from River Road on gated, what you plan to have that gated area, if someone needed to? Let's say there was something that prevented access from your main entrance on Bog Road and someone needed to get access through that, is that something that could be done?
Access from, like you're just talking about the existing driveway that goes in.
Yeah, the, well, the other, the other exit that you plan to have gated.
From River Road, you mean?
From River Road, yeah, I did do, I did do a turning radius for this access road to this point. I can definitely do double-check to make sure it is an existing driveway right now. And I have also driven it before on a big truck, so.
And we walked it with Paul as well, so.
Yeah.
I walked through it, if you put an ambulance through there, you're going to have to repaint it.
Yeah. That's what I was wondering, that's why I was just kind of asking the question, just to check on it.
It would fit, but it's going to get scratched.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Okay, so another hand, Matt?
Thank you. Question about the sound, so this has, this property has slopes and has wetlands. What impact do those have on how sound carries across the site?
This would largely depend on the vegetation in those areas. And generally speaking, open water will help to carry sound. In wetland area where you have vegetation, especially in spring and summer and fall, it would actually act as a sound deadening feature and would, just like foliage will, it will create a buffer to. it will create a buffer to mitigate the sound levels. I would imagine that it wouldn't have any appreciable impact, you know?
And I do want to just piggyback off that. I did do, I did do some rough calculations of feet from the top of the lodge and elevation change to the abutting properties. And from the lodge to, let's say, this corner right here, actually, it's closer, it's this one right here. It was 550 linear feet, and there was a 30, 30-foot elevation change going up. And that is completely wooded as well. And the parking that is along this end is, from this parking up to the top of the lodge, so you go this way, it's a great change of 62 feet up, and then it goes back down to 30 on the way back to the choke point.
And again, just to reiterate that the bagpipes or any kind of musical outdoor activity would not be conducted in the winter, which would, it would, because as you said, it's only-
Outdoor is highly unlikely.
We can't play them in the winter.
Can't play them in the winter, right?
Not outside.
So, as he said, that the sound mitigation of potential foliage in the summer month, spring, summer, fall-
Oh, yeah.
-would help.
It'll make a huge difference to it, similar to an acoustic barrier.
Even if those that did hear the sound test in, what month was it done?
February 4th.
February 4th. That it would be even dampened, it would be dampened even more.
Damped even more.
Yes.
Counselor Todd. Thank you. I just wanted to get a sense of the, the larger events that you said that you had planned. Are those, do you consider those public events? I mean, are those generally open to the public, or is it like a membership only?
Very much public. So, we promote them through our avenues and through our, you know, means. We promote them to the public. We bring in all kinds of outsiders into these, especially when we go to venues like Pembroke Pines. The problem is, when we book them with outside venues, we hemorrhage money. So, it makes it very hard for us as a nonprofit to continue to do those events when we're spending tens of thousands of dollars for site rentals. This would help us to continue to host those events without the onus of paying for them with these huge bills that we're getting from companies, so. But they are very much family events. Children are there. They are family events.
If I could do a follow-up on that.
Yes.
One of the reasons that I'm asking is that I'm getting the sense that what you're saying is you're, you would certainly be making best efforts to try to be good neighbors-
Very much so, yeah.
So, there's no reason, for example, that you wouldn't be sending invitations to the abutters and letting, giving them notification, inviting them to the events?
We would be inviting them to these events, yes.
Okay.
So, it begs the follow-up question that if it becomes a popular event location, that people are gonna start to, to come to you and say-
We don't have the bandwidth for that. We, we, like I said, we've got a staff of five, three time full-time, three people full-time.
But, but again, if somebody came to you and said they wanna have a wedding there-
We just don't have the means to do it.
Okay.
And there's Bull Meadow down the street. They can go to Bull Meadow.
Did you have a question?
I was just gonna say, I think, you know, listening to your comparables about other venues, I think this far, you know, this is far bigger. 500, maybe 600 people. Tupelo might be the biggest event place, about 700, from my quicker research. Pembroke Pines is nowhere close to that. Concord Country Club's nowhere close to that. I don't think Dairy Field Country Club is-
We did 400 at Dairy Field. That was our, that was our biggest one.
So, this, this would be your biggest?
But again, we're hoping someday to get to there. We're, we're nowhere near there yet.
Okay.
But I'd also say, when you're comparing them, I think the numbers that you find online are the inside seating areas for events and function halls, and there isn't nearly capacity inside here. When we're talking about 600 people, it's primarily an outdoor event.
Yeah.
So, if you're looking at a Pembroke Pines or a Dairy Field Country Club or something like that, where they could be a tent event set up outside, then that's where they can be comparably sized.
You know, just, if I could follow up, I am in the distance of Concord Country Club for music, and in the middle of the summer, when they have weddings or whatever, I can barely hear it. And I can see the building, so, just for comparison's sake.
So, condition, you know, if we move, if we move towards an approval of this, one of the things we can condition is, is fencing, making it, you know, a little bit more tolerable. And, and that's okay with you guys as far as the piece goes. What are you looking at? I'm looking at choke point right now. Is that where you're, you're considering down around to that bend?
Yep. We brought in two fencing companies, just to give us an idea of what we're looking at. So, we've got two quotes, and they walked the, the line. And the idea would be to keep our guests away from abutting properties and to keep them out of the slightest side of, line of sight, rather.
Fencing on, at a, at an angle, at a corner, or are you gonna follow the line of-
It would follow the, the existing gravel road through the pinch point.
Then the ambulance isn't gonna fit. Okay, good, thank you. Any other questions from the board before we close the public hearing?
I-
Counselor Todd? Yeah?
I also have a comment, again, on my waiver request. Sorry. I did do some more research on this waiver request, and I believe I have gotten this waiver specifically on a different project. It was 2023-97 for a 12-foot wide, one-way access driveway, which is similar to what I'm proposing here. In the city report, comment 2.35, it states that in the zoning ordinance, you are allowed to have a 12-foot width in one-way traffic flow. However, in the site plan regulation, it says 14. So, the strictest condition applies, which would be the 14 feet, which is a site plan regulation, so I would ask for a waiver.
Strictest would comply? Strictest would be 12, wouldn't it?
Strictest would be 12, so it means I could have a, a scarier road.
It's, and actually, I've addressed it as a condition of approval, because by definition, it's not, the way you've described it, is not a driveway, so it's a moot point. We don't need to worry about the waiver. And I've said that regardless, the applicant has verbally indicated to staff that this is not a driveway, but is only an emergency access.
There you go. I'm just making sure.
Accordingly, signage shall be placed at the beginning and end of this 12-foot wide emergency access only, clearly stating that it's a secondary means of access for emergency services only and shall be blocked from entry by the public with a method approved by the fire department.
Perfect. So, there you go.
Okay.
We fixed it off.
Sorry.
All right, John, last, last shot.
I, I, the only thing I wanna say is that if you're moving towards making a decision on the conditional use permit, I'd like to at least go through the recommended conditions of approval, because like I said, we have issues with some of them, and some are okay. But I don't know when you want me to do that. So, I just don't wanna miss that opportunity.
Well, we could certainly leave the public hearing open to address them and, and talk about them. Typically, we close the public hearing, address it internally, and then, and then rule on it. But we could certainly talk about it from the, from the board's perspective. With any of these projects, you, me as a board member looks at the project and forms some type of an opinion. We are, you know, desperate for housing, and I look at it and say, this is a great housing lot, this is a great housing lot. But you've made a compelling argument. You've made a compelling story to, to change the use of, not change the use, but kinda modify my opinion of a, of a, of a property like this in a residential area, where before I would've said, no, you can't do that, you can't do that. You know, the, the comparisons are kind of not really there with Beaver Meadow or White Park or Rollins Park or any of those types of things where things are happening. But I, I get it, and I understand it, but I'm, I'm leaning towards, towards approving the conditional use permit from the, from the, from my perspective and only my perspective. I don't wanna move it in, in one direction or the other. So, I would like to kind of open it up for discussion at the board level, conditions of approval. I'm happy to hear what you, what you've got for issues regarding the, the conditions of approval. Maybe we do that first. Maybe we look at it from that. Do we have any thought process? Amanda?
Two, one question. There are some buildings that you guys are not gonna touch, but are in disrepair. Some that have some boardings on them and whatnot. Over towards that smaller little pinch point area where those athletic fields are, I think there's some, is there, to avoid any, I guess, potential vandalism and/or squatting or any of those kind of things? What is your plan for that, so that that is avoided, so?
Yeah. There, there's a lot of them that are dilapidated, and, and as some of the neighbors would tell you, we're losing some of them from snow and stuff like that. They're just collapsing on their own. So, the ones we can save, we'll save and use for storage. If the ones need to come down, we'll have to take them down. Anything that's dangerous has already hopefully been boarded up, so to keep kids and vandals out of there. We're, we just don't have the property, so we're doing as much as we can, what, with what we can. But the plan would be to make them as safe for our guests and everybody else as possible. So, all the playground equipment, the pool, all of that will be removed. And the, the buildings that are dangerous will either be boarded and sealed up, or we'll, we'll do our best.
The fire department may be able to help you with that with the bird.
Yeah, that's true. That's true.
True, true. In regards to housing, as you've mentioned before, when Morgan mentioned the elevation change to be 60 feet-
Yeah.
-that would be almost impossible as far as built, to, to buildable land, and with the amount of some wetlands that is surrounding that, I don't know that would be, that it would lend itself to making it any kind of density and/or maybe the mention of one mega mountain on there. But the point is, is I don't know that there's a whole lot of uses as far as housing on this because of the dramatic elevation changes that occur. So, we do have to take that into consideration, that even if we wanted it to be in the location that is, I just, from my little experience of, of that, I think that we're stretching it to say that it could be other uses. And so, I just wanted to point that out.
Yeah, this, this depicts the really steep slopes greater than 25% are the dashed lines, and then it's surrounded by wetlands, so.
You couldn't, you wouldn't be able to get approved for a driveway, right? I mean, you could imagine someone like, unless you got a snowcat.
Yeah.
So, to that point about, so if there were houses to go in there, with the, so, slopes aside, with wetlands, how does that impact putting in septic systems? Would it be more difficult to put in because of the water table?
For residential housing, yeah.
Yeah. And the seasonal high water table is very, it's shallow throughout the site, so for our stormwater systems, we are raising the site in that area, so we do have the correct separation, but yeah.
That's what I thought, thank you.
And the one part that I do believe is somewhat flat is where the athletic field is. And it's such a small area that you would, yes, because where the main lodge is, it just kind of, it has a lot of drop-off. But the one flat area, which as we can see, the smallest part of the, of the land that exists, is at minimum, would just not have the density for any housing in there. So, I just wanted to point that out, if-
Again, highest and best use, I mean, that's our mantra, you know, what's the highest and best use of property?
Yeah, because I just don't think that it would be, lend itself to be a good spot-
It's not like you're gonna be able to put 50 tiny houses on it or anything like that. Counselor Todd?
Yeah, I just didn't want to forget, did I hear that we had some members who weren't here tonight who had some questions?
Jeff Sampras had one, and it was that, and-
Oh, okay, so we're all recovered on that?
Correct, yeah.
Yeah, I just wanted to check on it.
It was regarding turnings, I believe, on the-
Well, it was, no, not specifically. It was regarding, he's concerned that the access of River Road is substandard and how the fire department would get there to use the connector road to the southern lot if the driveway off Bog Road was blocked. However, the, the fire marshal's already addressed that, and there's four conditions from the fire marshal, and, and so, that's-
Yeah, and me and, and him met this week, and we talked it all through, and-
Yeah, it, it'll-
Because I don't have it in writing.
Yeah, but, but it's, I mean, there are conditions, so you just revise the plan, and he'll sign off on it, so.
Okay. Any other questions? Yep. All right.
All right, so, on page 19 of the staff report, there's a number of proposed conditions for the conditional use permit. The first one is to limit the, I think, again, all these relate to just the large events, I think, not just the daily events that we're proposing out here.
Well, yeah, because the daily events are, for the most part, inside.
Well, in and out. They're out, too.
Yeah, they, they, they do relate to the large events, yeah.
Because a lot of these don't apply to the small events, so that's why I was making the distinction at the beginning of my remarks. But the first condition is that the outdoor events are limited to one per quarter each calendar year. And we prefer not to limit it to four. We propose being able to go up to six, although we're not intending to have, we don't have six planned right now. We'd like the ability to go to six. Don't think there's a material public benefit to decrease that request from six to four. And also, limiting one per each quarter can be problematic, because a lot of these events are based on the calendar, their holidays, their cultural events, and they may not coincide, you know, one per calendar quarter. So, again, on that condition, we'd propose, what we initially proposed, which is a maximum of six throughout, throughout the course of the year.
Okay.
On the second condition, outdoor events should not begin until 10:00 a.m., and they'll cease by six. We've got no problem with events not beginning until 10:00 a.m. There may be, you know, setup for other things going on in the morning before that, but the events wouldn't begin before 10:00 a.m. 6:00 p.m. is a little bit earlier than we'd like. In our application, we proposed 9 o'clock at night, and we would like to stick to that if possible. We don't think 9 is unreasonably late, particularly given the sound studies that you've seen and the minimal impact we think they're gonna be to neighbors. The other benefit to allowing them to go a little bit later than 6 o'clock is that if you have large crowds leaving the site, they're not gonna be leaving during, you know, the, the peak hour, the rush hour traffic, if they're, if they're weekday events.
So, let me just hit that one. So, again, the end of the event is, is, let's split it and say 8 o'clock. You know, if, if you could have events that went until 8 o'clock, chances are pretty good that there's somebody there for an hour, two hours afterwards, closing things up, getting things squared away, putting things away, getting the site cleaned up. People will be leaving at their leisure. The event's over. We'd be aimable to an 8 o'clock end day or end time, with no limitations on when you can leave, but I don't think it, it's a big deal. What's that?
Really, what the sound is, the music. So, if, if music ends, no late-
So, if the music ends at 8 o'clock-
If music ends by 8 o'clock, the then-
You could be there for another two hours, yeah.
That's fine, yeah.
Okay, all right.
On the third one, outdoor events should have duration of no more than two back-to-back days, that's fine. Fourth, limited to no more than 600 people, including all ages, no more than 200 vehicles. I think that's fine. That's what we proposed. Parking proposed is 200 vehicles, so I think we have to live by that anyways. The events, I guess, just to clarify, our goal would be maybe to have up to 600 attendees. There's gonna be, you know, potentially staff people, volunteers organizing the event, which we wouldn't think would count towards that-
Yep.
-that 600 number.
So, revise that to include staff?
I would say just no more than 600 attendees, I think, works. And then on E, before January 1st of each year, we provide the planning division with a schedule of the four. Again, we'd like that to be six outdoor events, with some details. The, the issue that we have here is that by January 1, the calendar of events isn't known for the whole year at that point.
I wondered about that.
We talked about it, and we're happy to give advance notice a few months before any advance. We can provide you notice, and you can send it out, or we can send it out to neighbors and abutters, but January 1 just isn't really feasible for the scheduling occurs.
What's a, can I? What's a good?
I was saying, can, usually, in, in the world of, of planning, I would assume that you'd know by, no later than, than March, what your yearly calendar is gonna be in far, as far as promotion of things, so.
That sounds reasonable, yeah.
I mean, I'm just-
I don't understand. Why, why is the planning department involved in notifying the abutters?
That's, I was wondering about that, too.
Why, we, why, why do we wanna be involved in that at all? Or even-
Maybe we don't want to.
I, I, I-
I wouldn't.
Okay.
If we, if we dictate that, that the six events, when do we, I mean, as long as If we dictate that the six events, when do we, I mean, as long as there's no two back to backs, I don't know that. We're mucking up the waters here, I'd strike that completely.
I agree with you.
Great.
That makes it easy.
That's also in eight point eight, I'll point that out just because we're seeing it in the same place. But then, condition F, noise from the outdoor event should be limited so that no noise from the event is audible from any immediately adjacent residents at any of their property lines. I think that this goes a little bit too far. I don't think it's consistent with what the ordinance requires in terms of noise levels, either the zoning ordinance or the sound ordinance. Noise, I think, is expected to be perceptible at property lines from any neighbors as long as it's not unreasonably loud. And we submitted evidence on the anticipated sound levels. Obviously, if there's a future issue, the city has a noise ordinance that can be enforced. But I don't think it would be reasonable to expect us to live by having no noise at a property line.
Okay, strike that as well, okay.
Can I just go, if I can, just go back to E for one second? I think that the one thing is that we are obviously saying by striking the notification issue from the planning board that we're relying on Hampshire Scott to properly notify the neighbors. I think that this would be in here as an extra safeguard for the neighbors to make sure that they got some kind of notification of these events. So we're really basically saying.
So, so.
Is that right?
Ooh, absolutely, yeah.
So is it unreasonable to post the events and the dates that the events would be on by March first?
Not at all, and also we've got a Facebook group just for the abutting neighbors, so we can notify them.
A Facebook group just for the abutting neighbors?
Correct.
Talk about communication.
Trying, we're trying.
So again, I, great point, thank you. But I think that we stay out of the notification business on our end and the city ordinances for levels of sound are going to kick in on the levels of sound. Okay?
So NH Scott shall provide notifications?
Shall post notifications on their social media and websites regarding schedule of events by March first?
Sure.
March first. Look at us go.
John, that's it?
That's it?
Appreciate it.
Okay, thank you, so we'll close the public hearing. Thank you very much for your testimony, thank you for the public for testimony. Well appreciated. All right, conversations? Yes, Vina?
I don't know if I should bring this up or not, but.
Sure you can.
Do you think we could limit the attendee capacity?
Sure.
That's not six hundred people?
I mean, you can. I don't know that we want to, or we have a, I mean, a need to.
As, as a, recall the parking, they have a limitation that's done by parking, that's where it's enforced. So if they want to have more, they have to abide by the parking and that in itself is going to limit the attendees unless they, unless they bus them and contract a busing company to have them park somewhere else. But then again, that event, let's just assume the event that does have a large draw is not going to be held in Concord. So I think that, I think that what we have purviewed to is the parking. And that's where I think we stay in. And our lane, otherwise it's.
Well, I guess looking at the abutters and their concerns, so the main reason for having the property is for their headquarters, for their six staff members. So these other events are kind of in addition to that. But it's those events that are the main concerns of the abutters, if I'm understanding it correctly.
Yeah, I think that's probably a safe assumption.
They don't have any issue with the staff members, the headquarters.
Or the classes or whatnot, yeah.
Classes, right.
Outdoor trainings, athlete trainings. Okay.
David, quick, real three points I just want to make. One, I don't see personally a huge leap in use on this property.
Change.
Yeah, it's recreational, the property is fifty-eight acres. It was formerly recreational and it's not really changing a lot. That's point number one. Point number two is culturally, the city of Concord does not have a significant number of cultural events in a given year in the city. I might point out that in deference to a very, very good old friend of mine, Van McLeod. He, if he were alive, he would be sitting out there promoting this, not even giving the spelling of his last name. You know, I remember him always speaking highly of the city needing these kinds of things. So I'm really his voice tonight for that. And thirdly, I live in an area between Wright's Park, Bishop Brady High School, and I can hear band practice over on Memorial Field from the high school. I don't find music offensive. So the noise level issues are not my issues either, to my points.
I'd bite my tongue and say, I knew Van McLeod and you, I know Van McLeod, but I didn't say it, so just for the record.
I drive his car.
No, so my question's going into this, of course, right? One of my jobs is housing. And I'd love to have housing there. Looking at the maps, that map, we're not going to get much housing there. It's just not, I mean, I wish, but I don't think we're going to do that. I do, I do not want to lose some taxable property in the city of Concord. But maybe we'll just have to build some other things, Tim, if we can get some more taxable property. And I'm not that concerned about the size of the event. I mean, I did push back a little bit on that, I'm not super concerned. And, you know, listening to music is subjective. I might like to sit in my back deck and listen to bagpipes, somebody else might not. I do like listening to little kids, so.
That's just your day, that's your day job.
That is my real day job.
It's your day job.
But I get it, so that's subjective, that's a preference. So they satisfied all of my concerns and questions, so I'm comfortable moving forward.
Any other questions?
So in your packet, we've got some changes to, I'm going to hit eight point six, let me back up. So we've got to come back to waivers and we've got to come back to all of that stuff. But we'll start with my saying about the findings of fact. We're using the testimony you heard here tonight, the information that we've got in our packets of information as our findings of fact. But I'm going to skip out of order, so if you can tell me where I got to go back. I want to, I want to jump to eight point six because that's the crux of the issue is in your packets. The note that staff recognized in the second paragraph, which said if the board feels the applicant insufficiently addressed the potential concerns or does not satisfy the criteria reviewed in item five point one of this report, then the board may deny the conditional use permit. That was outlined in the five, the six or seven bullet points of, is it consistent with residential areas? Is it consistent with this? Does it propose a problem, does it propose a health issue? I'm not going to read them all off, but I think, and again, I think in my estimation, they have presented a good case. I think the highest and best use for me is something like this. If it's not this, it's something else. So I'm going to make a recommendation that we grant the conditional use permit outlined in eight point six with the following changes. We're going to change the hours, excuse me.
Summarize them.
Yeah, can you summarize it? We've got X's and dashes all over the place here.
Let me say what I have and then correct me.
Yeah.
I have A, outdoor events shall be limited to a maximum of six per calendar year. B, outdoor events shall not begin until ten AM with outdoor music ceasing by eight PM and remaining outdoor activities associated with the outdoor events ceasing by nine PM, noting that set-up preparation and closing down the site by NH Scott staff may occur prior to ten AM and after nine PM on the day of the event.
Perfect.
Did we keep outdoor events shall have a duration of no more than?
No more than two back-to-backs, that was fine.
Outdoor events, D was fine, and then E, revised to?
Notification.
Whoops.
Notification on social.
My cursor just went crazy.
So E would be?
E says, NH Scott shall post notifications on their social media websites regarding the six outdoor events by March first of each calendar year. And I have made sure to include outdoor events so that.
Indoor events are.
Yeah.
Yep.
Outdoor events only.
And then F.
It's really the six events we're.
It's the six. Should I delete outdoor events?
Yeah, the six, all we care about is the six big ones.
Right.
Okay.
Or the up to six big ones.
Okay.
With up to six.
Sure, so.
And then, and we struck F.
Yeah, we struck F. Let's make it a language honor before March first.
Yeah, regarding the six events by March first of each calendar year.
Okay.
Just quickly, did we talk about the eight? Do we agree on the eight PM versus nine PM that the applicant requested?
I asked them, they find ending the, ending the music at eight.
The music, yeah, just the music that ends at eight.
Rest of it.
And then the rest can flow, I'll pass that. Okay? All right, so I've got a motion on the table that, to approve that conditional use permit as eloquently outlined by the clerk.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, further discussion, additional points? Ooh, what about the fence? Does that go here?
It would go.
Or is that condition of approval for the, for the plan?
You know, you could put it, you could put it here, or you could add it down to.
Eight point ten, site plan?
Yeah, because where the buffer landscaping is, you could throw it in there.
So let's leave that, so we got a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Opposed?
Opposed.
Okay, got one opposed, so the motion carries. So that's eight point six, so where am I headed now, Emery? Back to eight?
Yeah, so let's go back to eight.
Eight point one, it's as fine as a fact. Eight point two is to grant architectural design review approval for the conversion of the site to the NH Scott's headquarters as submitted. Would someone like to make a motion to grant architectural review approval as outlined?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded, discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries, eight point three is to deny the waiver request for the site plan, so that needs to be.
That, so that needs to be approved, the waiver request below from the site plan regulations for eight point three A, because the criteria are met, subject to the condition of approval that traffic control attendees are on the site.
Right, 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 okay.
For the six large outdoor events.
Yeah, to put people in the spots where they're supposed to go. Okay, so I'm not going to try to redo that, but would someone like to make a motion to grant the waiver request from the site plan regulations for parking lot markings and signage?
I'm so moved.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Eight point four is a denial of the waiver for driveway widths.
And we have to deny that because.
Yep, so eight point four is to deny the waiver request from the site plan regulations for eighteen point ten, which is the driveway widths, to not provide driveway widths as required. Be a motion to deny. I'll make a motion to deny.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries, so that motion's denied, or that, yeah, that waiver's been denied. Eight point five is to grant the waiver request below for the listed sections of the site plan regulations. And again, these are outlined A through V. Holy cow. All of those waivers are valid and nothing changed, Emery?
Correct.
Okay, would someone like to make a motion to grant waivers outlined eight point five A through V?
So moved.
Motion's been made and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries, eight point six is unaddressed. Eight point seven is to grant the conditional use permit for section twenty-eight, four, three, D. Conditional use permits required for certain disturbances of wetland buffers. I believe staff supported that, correct? Yes.
Correct.
Someone like to make a motion to grant that conditional use permit as outlined?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries, eight point eight is to grant conditional use permit for section twenty-eight, seven, eleven, E, alternative surfing, surfacing of the zoning that could surf on Bog Road. Ordinance to offer complete or partial substitution of an alternate surface thing for paved surfacing on the parking lot. Oh my goodness.
Who wrote that?
Who wrote that? Would someone like to make a motion to grant that conditional use permit as outlined? Whoops.
And there is a recommended approval, so we need to change that to March.
March first, okay. I will make that motion, changing that to March first.
And I'll second.
Okay, motions were made and seconded, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries, eight point nine is to grant the conditional use permit for section twenty-eight, seven, eleven, B, construction of fewer parking spaces of the zoning ordinance. Would someone like to make a motion, prior to final approval of site plans, revise the full number of spaces provided? Someone like to make a motion to grant the conditional use permit as outlined?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries, eight point ten, grant site plan approval for the construction, conversion of the site at two-ten Bog Road to NH Scott headquarters, subject to the following precedent and subsequent conditions. And those are outlined in precedent conditions one. You've got an upload revised document note there on precedent condition one for the applicant. A through. J, K, L, M, O, P, Q, R. We're going to double-digit numbers here and I'm going to give up, so we're all the way through W. Is this a precedent condition for the fence?
So if you wanted to throw in a fence, I would throw it in under, I just had it and then it all of a sudden disappeared. Under eighteen. There's X actually. L.
Eighteen L?
You could, you could throw it in under L to say, as part of that.
The perimeter buffers.
At the end of that, you could just say, as part of the perimeter buffer.
Okay.
And provide some parameters for the, do you care how tall it is? What type of fence do you want it to be? Where do you want it? I mean, you want it on the whole site? Do you just want it along? The abutters, trees have come. Mr. LeFrenier's property line, do you want it six feet tall?
Hampshire Scott guy. Sorry. So are you getting quotes to go around, kind of around that corner on the?
So basically what we're trying to do is, it's kind of hard to describe, but after you leave the main lodge area.
Come down?
That goes down.
Yeah.
So basically what we're trying to do is where it gets narrow and where the abutters are close.
Yeah.
On the left-hand side, if we're heading down.
Yeah.
We're talking along the tree line.
Yeah.
Fence there, and I believe we did, we got quotes for six-foot galvanized width slats to go in between.
Okay.
To keep the visibility down, and I believe we got quotes for green, to try and match the whole.
Okay.
But I've got, like I said, I've got two different fencing companies with options for us. So I mean, I'm happy to try and work with you guys and figure it out. The other option is planting trees, we can do that as well. Footwards were a minimal, so.
And let me point out that.
Plant trees instead.
Yeah, I think that doesn't sound very attractive.
I'm thinking a nice cedar wood plank fence along there, but that, I realize that's not in the cards. How about if we just put a vegetated buffer?
Well, and that's what I was going to, so condition L, the site plan regulations already call for
perimeter buffer.
A thirty-foot wide perimeter landscape buffer around the entire perimeter of the entire site. And there are things that, I mean, in site plan regulations call for that. So there are items in that that have to be placed, they have to meet one of five options. So an option one is like sixty percent of tree deciduous and forty percent evergreen trees. So you might want to revise that if you don't want it around the entire site, if perhaps you just want it on the west boundary.
I think the west boundary is the, is the, is the one.
That's the key area.
Is the key.
That's the point, yeah.
That's the, all the way around that buffer.
Yeah.
So are we okay with, if it's one is deciduous and, you know, trees, a tree buffer as opposed to hydrangeas or a six-foot chain link fence with slats?
Buffer option one is the mixture of evergreen and deciduous trees shall be such that no more than sixty percent of the trees are deciduous and no less than forty percent are evergreen.
Good with that?
Yeah, and then you could fit the ambulance through.
And then we could fit the ambulance through, perfect, all right, sounds like a plan. That's good?
The entire.
Good with that? Plant trees instead of a fence, okay. The entire western buffer.
And, and do you want the entire west boundary?
Yeah, I think so, I think so.
Can you give me?
Well, no, they don't, no.
I mean, the entire.
Yeah, no, that's a huge amount of space.
And that's why I'm asking.
Yeah. There's also slopes.
From there all the way, so do you just want this portion?
Yeah, that's the portion I was thinking of.
Right. Okay, let me figure out how to describe that.
It's heavily forested already, so what we're talking about.
Trees are dying. I get it, it's like that pinch point that's.
There are already a ton of trees there, but what we're talking about is from approximately this area here down to here, just to keep people walking through that area away. This is all woods, all along here.
Yeah, that is.
Yeah.
And this is all forest, this one here too, so I wouldn't.
So from, from that hook there at the top.
Yeah.
Let's say down past the field area.
Exactly, we just want to keep people away from the property abutting.
So keep going down towards the, towards River Road.
Yeah, and I think I had four hundred feet paced out by the fencing company.
Okay.
But I can get you the quote if you need it.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I guess the only thing was that there was also discussion about how, we were just talking about this. Yeah, I mean, I guess the only thing was that, uh, there was also discussion about how, we were just talking about this, about how a lot of the vegetation there is dying, so.
Yeah, yeah. But I don't think we dictate them to replace that.
Yeah.
Okay, I am a little sketchy on the length and the, and the area. Are we okay with that as far as approval?
Uh.
Western boundary of from the pinch point.
I'm trying to figure that out.
That jog and the pinch point past the, past the athletic fields.
Well, four, four hundred feet I can get, but four hundred feet from the, I'm trying to figure out how to describe. Can you give, um, like, four hundred feet from the. I mean, the northwest corner would be easy, but it's not the northwest corner.
No, it's that little, see that little dent in? See that little dent in?
Yeah.
The southwest corner of the northern portion.
Is it the southwest, southwest corner of the northern portion? The southwest corner of the northern portion?
Could it be two hundred feet in each direction from the narrowest point of property?
Yeah, the southwest corner of the northern, of the northern portion works.
I think that, I think you got it. All right, there you go, David, thank you.
Suggestion, David.
All right, so that's gonna be, it's gonna be two hundred feet.
Narrowest point of the property.
Two hundred feet.
In each direction.
Right, along the property line.
In the western side.
Hundred feet along the western property line from each side of the narrowest point.
Right, that little point, that little point that goes on the top.
On each side of the narrowest.
So that's in as L, right? Okay, so I've already listed them all into the record, uh, going back for eight point ten, so I think we're ready.
Make one, Chris, I think you went to W, and there's actually an X.
There is an X?
Yeah.
Just to be clear, so we don't leave X out.
All right, on the next page is X, so on the conditions through X, and then subsequent conditions.
What, it's two, three, and four in precedent conditions?
Two, three, and four are precedent conditions, and then subsequent conditions, one through, holy. Twenty-one. My goodness, none of these staff reports are so long. All right, so would someone like to make a motion to grant site plan approval as outlined, in all of those precedent and subsequent conditions, I'm not gonna list them again. Um, I'll make a motion to grant that site plan as outlined, the site plan approval as outlined.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Any discussion? You good?
Yeah.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. I think that's it, right? Yes. That is it. Okay, here, all set. Thank you. Thanks very much. See, we were making great time for the record. Nine twenty-seven now, all these other people that are here are. Thought they were in for a quick, a quick night.
Everything, no, he's quite happy.
All right, let's move on quickly if we can.
Everything else, I.
And let's get on to the next item in the agenda. So item, uh, nine H, North. So nine H, North Point Engineering, we'll read that into the record if we can.
Uh, North Point Engineering, uh, LLC, on behalf of Manchester Street Concord Auto LLC and Manchester Street Concord Auto TIC LLC requests approvals for a major site plan application and a conditional use permit application for use in the AP District Community Water Systems Protection Area that will render impervious more than fifteen percent of the lot and certain waivers from the site plan regulations for the expansion of the automobile inventory display area at one fifty Manchester Street in the Highway Commercial District and Industrial District.
See, we knew that was gonna be a long discussion. I'll bet we took you guys by surprise, though. Sat there saying, I'll be home by eight o'clock, I'm gonna be ready to roll. All right, uh, welcome to the table. If you could state your names for the record?
Uh, Aaron Tebow, project manager with North Point Engineering.
Uh, Dennis Wilson, owner of, uh, Capital Cities.
Okay, we'll get right back to you in just a sec. If we could get a quick staff update on this one?
Uh, the applicant has worked with staff and we have a good application, and, uh, for the most part, they're meeting everything with just a few conditions of approval, which is very nice and commendable. So there is one condition.
Twenty-seven pages of subsequent conditions.
And there's one condition of approval, uh, that we will need to strike because it actually meets the exception, uh, which I missed. And Aaron so kindly pointed it out to me this afternoon, and it's eight point six, A one Z. So when we get around to.
Remind me when we get there.
A one Z, we will, we'll strike that.
Z. A one Z. All right, um, sorry, names again?
Aaron Tebow, North Point Engineering.
And Dennis Wilson.
Aaron and Dennis, welcome to the table. Uh, tell us about this project.
Thank you, sir. Uh, good evening, members of the board, staff. I will tell you that I'll be quick, and then I'll also show you. Uh, we have a proposed project that includes the expansion of inventory storage area. Uh, I'll go over the existing conditions real quick, and then we'll move into the proposal. Uh, I'll go over a couple waivers really quickly, and then, uh.
We got all night, so tell us, make sure you do a good job.
So we have an existing dealership, uh, that is on Manchester Street, um, surprising. We got a thirty-foot access, uh, water sewer, electric, all underground, gas, um, an existing ninety-five hundred square foot metal frame building with seventy-three parking spots. It has an existing detention basin, uh, existing drainage infrastructure, and a lot merger in twenty-twenty-two combined one fifty Manchester Street, which is what is shown on the screen, with Ten Integra Drive, which is now shown on the screen. Uh, this old boundary is also the zoning boundary. It's in both the commercial highway and industrial district. Uh, we've been to the zoning board to get, uh, variance to expand the automobile, automobile sales and service, uh, into the industrial district. So, yeah, we'll move into the proposal.
No bagpipes.
No bagpipes, no sound engineering. Learn something new every time I come here. All right, so we are expanding on the Integra Drive portion of the property, I will call it, uh, numerous times. Basically, there's a small connection right here. Uh, we're looking to expand inventory storage area, uh, and vehicle display area. This is a big expanse of pavement. Uh, it's going to have its own onsite drainage. It's going to connect to the existing onsite drainage. Uh, not much is happening up front. We're going to add a couple required ADA parking spaces, and we're looking for approval. Uh, there's a couple Connex boxes out there that aren't a part of the original approval, and, uh, we need to shift the dumpster, uh, away from this small connection area to the west. Um, we are adding a connection to Integra Drive, uh, central to the existing property line. Trying to think. It's pretty self-explanatory. We're adding, uh, a ton of landscaping along with the project, a large stormwater management system. Essentially, it all collects this into one basin. These are all hydraulically connected with pipes. Uh, it's oversized in the current proposed condition, uh, for potential future expansion. Right now, there's, it captures and contains all, uh, newly created stormwater. Uh, the existing infrastructure, which is shown here, is going to remain. Uh, there's, there's a connection to an existing drain manhole, a six-inch orifice that kind of throttles the flow out of the old detention basin into the stormwater system, municipal stormwater system. But we're looking to connect, uh, the old system to the new system at the exact same elevation. So anything that gets above that area where the detention pond would've kicked in in the first place, uh, it is going to flow into our new large detention basin. Like I said, there's a new access point, uh, the drainage aside for future expansion. We're in the AP District, so there's some, uh, conditions that go along with that as far as stormwater and lot coverage. Uh, we can talk about that here in a second. But with that, that is my short synopsis.
We appreciate that. Uh, just for the record, too, for the board's perspective, you know, we've taught, every time now we talk about projects on Manchester Street, we gotta address the easement. Our nine-feet pound of flesh is in this particular plan, so. Just, uh, just a condition of approval, and it's gonna be on all of these plans going forward as we, uh, as we hopefully plan for, uh, expansion on, uh, Manchester Street. So thank you for the shirt, brief, uh, brief, um, bullet points on that. Uh, any questions from the board? It looks fairly straightforward. Uh, you change uses in the, at the zoning level right on the line, so everything that you've got now is in the, in the existing space that you're doing. And then, once you go over that imaginary zoning line, then that's gonna be the whole new development, right?
Essentially, yes.
And the only thing that's going in there is lighting, um.
Lighting landscaping and some pavement.
And paving, okay. All right, no questions? Anybody, any member of the audience have any questions or concerns? No? Yep. Certainly, Deana.
I know, it's always the thing I hang my head on, any solar or any sustainable. It's my thing. I'm trying to bring it into the city, and I just, nobody's doing it.
They might sell electric vehicles.
Yeah, no, not at this time.
Gotta ask.
Gotta ask.
Gotta ask.
I don't know if they're.
It's way clear.
That building might not support them.
I know.
No, 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 it won't.
Having been in there many times.
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions? No? All right, we'll close the public hearing. Thank you very much for your testimony.
Thank you.
All right, in your packet, um. Two, three, and we get to the eight. All right. Love it, eight point zero, keep that every single time. So again, using our, uh, findings of fact, the information that we've got in our packets, the testimony heard here tonight, uh, as our findings of fact to make, uh, determinations as we move forward. Uh, eight point two in your packet is to grant architectural design review approval for the expansion of the automotive parking and inventory display areas at one fifty Manchester Street. Will this stay mapped as one fifty Manchester Street and not an Integra address, or no?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, um, would someone like to make a motion to grant architectural design approval for that as outlined?
So moved.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Eight point three is to deny the waiver request below for the site plan regulations because of the request as a variance, not a waiver. Uh, would someone like to make a motion to deny the waiver request in eight point three as outlined for, uh, section eighteen oh seven parking lot aisles and eighteen one oh, uh, driveway widths?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Eight point four is to grant the waiver request below from the listed section of the site plan regulations using the criteria of RSA six seventy-four forty-four, three, E, two, and sections thirty-six oh eight of the site plan regulations. And those are outlined in, I guess, what are those, A, B, and C?
A, B, C, with conditions one and two.
Conditions one and two. Would someone like to make a motion to grant those waivers as outlined?
So move.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Uh, eight point five is to grant the conditional use permit for the use of an aquifer protection AP District Community Water System Protection Area that will render impervious surface more than fifteen percent of the lot. Uh, I'm not gonna list the per's for the zoning, but per the zoning ordinances. Uh, would someone like to make a motion to grant that conditional use permit as outlined?
So move.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Grant major site plan approval for the expansion of the automotive parking and inventory display areas at one fifty Manchester Street. As submitted and subject to the following precedent and subsequent conditions, and those are outlined in precedent conditions one. Again, with a note to revise documents there for the applicant to the online portal, uh, one A through.
Double A.
Double A, we got there. Thank you, Matt. Through double A.
Striking Z.
Striking Z, which is the underground utilities portion of that, so just, again, A, A, through A, A, but striking Z. Uh, two and three, and then subsequent conditions one through ten. Would someone like to make a motion to grant, can't remember what we were granting, uh, major site plan approval for that, that expansion? As outlined. Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. You are all set. Thank you very much for that.
Thanks, sir.
And that moves us on to item, last one, well, in theory, we've gotta do some, we've gotta do some discussion on some zoning. What are we, K, H, I?
K, A, I.
Let's read item nine A. Thank goodness we got three items off the agenda early.
North Point Engineering LLC, on behalf of the City of Concord and Hampshire Aviation LLC requests approvals for a major site plan and architectural design review application and conditional use permit application for the reduction in driveway width from twenty-four to eighteen feet and certain waivers from the site plan regulations, including a determination of completeness and public hearing in one step for the construction of a new eleven thousand five hundred fifty square foot aircraft hangar at sixty-five Airport Road lease area D Z four in the industrial district and open space residential district. And I have a little.
Got it in red, so I don't forget it. Uh, so we need a motion, uh, to grant a waiver from section six oh three two C and section eleven oh five using criteria of RSA sixty-four forty-four three E and sub, uh, selection, in section thirty-six oh eight to allow for determination completeness and a public hearing in the same meeting and determine the application complete and and a development of regional impact. Would someone like to make a motion to determine the application complete a development of regional impact and?
Not a development of regional impact.
It is a regional.
Oh, excuse me, you're correct. It's because of the pepper.
Says it here, so if it was not right, I would. Would've been Anne Marie's fault. Um, so do we need a motion and a second to do it in a public hearing?
Yep.
Okay, so let's have a motion and a second to, uh.
So move.
Grant the waiver for.
Second.
The same meeting in a public hearing. Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries, and, uh, staff has determined the application complete, a development of regional impact. Uh, would someone like to make a motion to find the application complete, a development of regional impact, and set the public, and open the public hearing?
So move.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries, so we are in an open public session. Welcome to the table. You can thank Tim for getting you on the last item on the agenda before, no, I'm kidding, that was not his doing. Welcome to the table. You can state your names for the record?
Uh, Ian McGregor, North Point Engineering.
Charlie Cummings from Hampshire Aviation.
And for the record?
For the record, Tim Thompson, Assistant Director of Community Development.
Uh, it's also worth mentioning, uh, Jeff Lewis, our principal engineer, is here. Um, he's been working with Tim on some of the lease, uh, lease line agreement language as well, so.
Perfect, well, tell us about this project?
Um, so this is a, a ten-bay hangar that's being proposed on one of the developmental lease areas as part of the Concord Airport. Just in case anybody isn't aware, the Concord Airport is up on the heights. Um, we've got the National Guard Building here. Um, the transfer station and landfill is this property down here, and, uh, we're proposing this lease area highlighted in the magenta. And it's worth noting, all of the green areas surrounding the airport is conservation land that's, uh, regulated for use and, uh, activity through New Hampshire fishing game due to the environmentally sensitive, uh, threatened and endangered species that are found up there. Butterflies. Uh.
Cotton blue.
Yeah, so zooming in onto the, uh, leased property specifically, um, it was found during the, uh, survey and the existing conditions that the, uh, survey, or the, uh, lease agreement as it stands uh, does not line up with the access easement agreement with, uh, eighteen Chanel Drive. So this property would be accessed off of Chanel Drive instead of coming across the taxiway through the airport. So we are proposing, uh, in conjunction with the city to move that lease line, uh, so that they line up like that. The area of the lease parcel would stay exactly the same, um, and we believe the city is amenable to that as well. Here we've got, uh, rendering of the site plan that we are proposing. We have the ten-bay, uh, personal aircraft hangar, um, that is going to be parallel to the abandoned runway, which is now acting as the taxiway. Um, across the taxiway, we have the United Therapeutic Hangar that went up, uh, last year, two years ago, as well as a, um, identical and everything but color, uh, hangar as, uh, across the taxiway as well. So there'll be five doors on this side facing the runway, five doors on the opposite side facing the parking lot. We're proposing ten parking spaces, um, with, uh, the ADA spot available. As a condition of approval, and we are amenable to it as well, um, it was mentioned that the ADA spot may get parked in if all spaces are occupied. Um, so we are going to be, uh, removing a parking space and enlarging that final spot, so nobody is parked in. Um, as part of the zoning requirements, only two parking spaces are required for this, uh, aircraft hangar. We are also requesting a conditional use permit to reduce the width of our driveway down to eighteen feet. As I mentioned before, all of this kind of like mint green area is the conservation zone that is a, a, a no-touch, do-not-disturb-at-all, um, area. So to ensure. So to ensure that we're doing that, as well as trying to minimize any of the impervious area, we'd just like to keep an eighteen foot driveway that is within the limits of the conditional use permit. We've got the, the white line. It's been a little misleading on some of our, our diagrams. That is a center line for aircraft to follow. Helps keep them centered so their wings don't hit anything. And Charlie, if you wouldn't mind kind of describing the use and, you know, the aircraft that are going to be stored at the hangar.
Sure. Delighted to be with you all today. Hopefully you find this consistent with exactly what these developments were intended to be used for at the airport. This is all for general aviation purposes. Partners and I, a handful of which are here tonight, which if there's nobody else here, they may not even need to say hello to you, but they came.
It's real to be here, I can tell.
They are delighted and came to speak in support of it, but we formed this LLC purely for this purpose. None of us are developers. It's purely for the storage of piston aircraft, small Cessnas, things like that. There's a couple of us that are going to be building kit planes in the, in the units. And as Ian mentioned, it's an all metal prefab building that is a cut and paste of the exact same unit immediately adjacent on the taxiway. So happy to answer any, any other questions you might have about it. We're also planning on bagpipe Monday, Wednesday, Fridays.
Six big events a year?
Yep. So happy to answer any question.
In conjunction with Wings and Wheels.
Perfect. So I do have a couple of questions, so I love it. I think it's great, you know, a hundred percent support it. From the millions of people that I'm sure are still tuned in at ten o' ten on Tuesday, on a Wednesday night. The usage for everyday usage, so if you're a recreation pilot coming in for the weekend, is this, is this intended for them? Or is this intended for plane owners that can rent the space, keep their units in there, repair them, do the work, and they own that space and, and can go from there?
The former. So the LLC has, will have ten member owners, each of which is an owner of the individual units in which they'll have a plane that they're building or, or maintaining. I'm fairly certain all of us have other full-time jobs, so yeah.
And facilities in there. It's not, there's not a lounge. It's not made for that type of use, right? It's not a terminal. It's just a storage facility.
It's a shell for ten planes.
Ten planes, perfect. Okay?
The architect or the layout of the building itself is here as well. So you can see there's ten hangars and then just a small storage area off to the side.
So I'm going to make the assumption that the little notches are the tails of, for the tails of the planes.
That's correct.
These are what are called T-hangers, if you couldn't tell.
Oh, that makes.
The planes kind of sit like that.
Yeah, very cool.
Yeah, very nice.
Great. Any other questions? Those drive in, like, I mean, you gotta have, you must have something that pushes them around into.
It's basically a manual you walk. Charlie can probably explain it better than I can.
Hand tug.
They're hand tugs.
Hand tug. Oh, nice.
No ground crew.
No ground crew, no.
That sounds nice. Is that something the city is willing to chip in?
As I'm in the middle of negotiations, I'll keep quiet on that.
The only oddity was access through the, you know, to the site, through the novice parking area, and that's all been taken care of.
If I may, again, for the record, Tim Thompson, the Assistant Director of Community Development, oversight management of the Concord Municipal Airport is part of my duties. The airport, as was outlined previously, is primarily under Conservation Management Zone agreement with the New Hampshire Fish and Game and the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service for the protection of habitat for the Carter Blue Butterfly. There are very limited development zones that are city-owned property within the fence of the airport that are limited by those, by that agreement for the types of uses of aviation-related only that are allowed to happen within the fence of the airport. The city has been successful recently, obviously, with the United Therapeutics hangar that was opened up in April of last year. One of the finest examples of.
Beautiful, beautiful building.
Aviation construction that you will find anywhere in the world. It's the world's only net zero emission aircraft hangar. It's a phenomenal building. If you ever get a chance to go in and see it, it's an impressive facility. Building upon that, we've been trying to get other development zones developed within the airport. Charlie, when he first approached the city, I was actually looking at the zone immediately adjacent to United Therapeutics where unfortunately a large amount of soil materials was moved to during the construction of United Therapeutics, which made construction on that site a little bit more difficult. We've shifted gears, opted for development zone four. This was always intended to be accessed through the easement that was obtained through the novice parking lot. It was only through the survey work that was done for this project that we discovered that the location in the conservation management and development zone agreement didn't line up with where it was supposed to be because it was based on GIS data when it was developed. We have had conversations with both Fish and Game and U.S. Fish and Wildlife, and I expect that we will be able to come to and record a memorandum of understanding between the parties that will memorialize the relocation of this development zone, meeting the requirements of all parties involved. Where this is in this process, Charlie and Hampshire Aviation are currently in an exclusive negotiation phase with the city under a letter of intent that was signed several months ago. Once we get through the planning board process, I'll actually be meeting with the Airport Advisory Committee in a non-public session next week to talk about some of the lease agreement parameters. Then that lease agreement will ultimately be presented to the city council for a final approval. The city will own the property and lease it to Hampshire Aviation for a lease fee, and Hampshire will also be responsible for the property taxes on the property. So the opportunity to see this city land within the airport developed and continuing the progress we continue to hope to see with the airport, which we eventually hope to see with a new airport terminal, which is being delayed for various reasons, but we're still very hopeful that that will continue to be an economic engine for bringing a proactive economic development to the city of Concord.
Perfect. Thank you. Any other questions? Dina?
Will there be any air gas or facilities, fuel, oil?
Nope.
You know you want to ask the other question. Go ahead and ask.
No, I'm not.
I can answer the question before you ask it. Because it's an airport, glare is a major issue, so we would not be able to do solar on the roof.
I was, I'm not going to ask that.
I didn't know.
You talked about United Therapeutics being beautiful and having everything.
That's right. Okay, any other questions? Nope. Okay, we'll close the public hearing. Yep?
Oh, I just wanted to mention one of the other waivers that we're seeking is landscaping waiver, and due to the space constraints, we're very limited on the available, or available grass area to do landscaping.
We don't like trees on airports.
Yeah, yeah, I know. I get it. I get it.
Okay, anything else?
Well, I guess it's worth mentioning, it will be green.
It will be green.
And I noticed last time I was out there, it appears to be the same color green that the National Guard.
Oh, yeah, yeah, the big building with the. Good.
Blend right in.
Okay. All right, thank you very much. Again, we'll, we'll close the public hearing, so thank you for your testimony.
Mr., you did not actually open it for anybody to come up. I don't believe that.
I didn't. Oh, I didn't. Okay.
No, no.
No, I opened it. I didn't ask you though, if any, I didn't ask if anybody wanted to come up, only because I didn't see anybody, so I. I saw you guys, right?
They just want to say that they support it.
No other public testimony? No? All right, so we'll close the public hearing. And in our packets of info, we've got, again, using as our finding of fact, yes?
If I could interject, just as it comes to, if you move forward to recommending a conditional approval, the applicant, and you guys should have received, the applicant has requested two waivers.
Oh, yeah.
Two additional waivers. We'd want to consider an add to not require the proposed building elevations to be signed and sealed by a New Hampshire licensed architect, as well as to not require architectural elevations to provide scale or bar. Staff is in support of those additional waivers. If those waivers are approved, we would also move to strike precedent conditions one A and B, and we would relabel C through G as A through E. And precedent condition two A, I'd like to, we have, we've tweaked the language just to more align with what will be required, so I can read that in at that time.
At that time, we'll do that. How about that? Okay. So keep me honest when we get there, okay?
Oh, sorry.
Yes.
To interrupt. I should also state, you, in the packet, we got responses from the Central New Hampshire Planning Commission.
I saw that.
About the DRI. I have received an email from the town of Pembroke.
You haven't or have?
I have.
Okay.
That was, is not part of this, but they reviewed it with their planning board, fire and ambulance services, waterworks, and conservation commissions. They have no comments.
Okay. And it looked like the New Hampshire Planning Commission didn't have anything either, so.
They pretty much deferred to Pembroke.
Yeah, okay. Okay, thank you, Alec. So again, using as our findings of fact, the information that we heard here tonight, the materials that are in our packet and the documentation that accompanies them. We've got a first item on the agenda is to grant architectural design review approval for the proposed eleven thousand five hundred and fifty square foot ten bay aircraft hangar and related site improvements as submitted. Would someone like to make a motion to grant architectural design review approval as outlined?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. So we got some waiver changes. So eight point two is to grant waiver requests below, and those are outlined in waiver requests. A, B, C, and D. Is that good?
Like, I could add E, section twelve point oh three four, to not require the proposed building elevations to be signed and sealed by a New Hampshire licensed architect or a New Hampshire licensed professional engineer as allowed by the state of New Hampshire Professional Licensing Board, and F, section sixteen point oh three three, scale, to not require the architectural elevations to provide a scale or scale bar.
Okay, so as read into the record by Alec, the eight point two is now A through F. Would someone like to make a motion to grant the waiver request as outlined?
So moved. Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Eight point three is to grant the conditional use permit for section twenty-seven, twenty-eight, seven, eleven G driveway widths, reduction of the zoning ordinance for a driveway designed for two-way traffic flow with a width of eighteen feet, where twenty-four feet is normally required. Again, using the information that we heard tonight from the applicant regarding the tight space, would someone like to make a motion to grant that conditional use permit as outlined?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion?
Those are for cars, not aircraft.
Pardon me?
That driveway's for cars, not aircraft.
That's correct. Correct. Good point. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries, and then eight point four, we're going to have a change. Eight point four is to grant major site plan approval for the eleven thousand five hundred and fifty square foot ten bay aircraft hangar and related site improvements. And those are outlined in precedent conditions. Take it, Alec. So we're going to take out, strike one.
It's outlined as precedent conditions A, one, A through G. We're going to strike A and B and relabel C through G as A through E.
Okay, so precedent conditions one A through E, two A and B, three and four, and then subsequent conditions one through nine are all intact?
Yep. Two, two A, we would like to revise as per section fifteen oh two five easements and restrictions, a lease line adjustment plan and/or memorandum of understanding as determined applicable by the Assistant Director of Community Development shall be prepared to memorialize the proposed relocation slash modification of the airport development zone for D Z four lease area. The memorandum shall be submitted for review by the Assistant Director of Community Development, clerk of the planning board, and city solicitor.
Perfect. And the mention regarding New Hampshire Fish and Game and all that is still pertinent or no? Okay, struck. All right, so again, with those changes that Alec outlined in precedent condition two A, and then the following subsequent conditions that I read into the record, would someone like to make a motion to grant that major site plan approval for that project as outlined?
So moved.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. You are all set. Thank you very much. Looks like a great project. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Look forward to those six events a year. All right. So let's take up the tantalizing topic of public capital facilities impact fee ordinances. So we have got before us our yearly review of impact fee ordinances. For the record, these haven't changed in a decade. So I'm, I'm thinking that we need to tweak them a little bit, and since the development environment or the development community from Concord's not here to give us a conversation regarding it, I, I don't know that there's opposition to it. I don't know that there's, there's a need to do anything more than look at it and maybe look at some, some amounts. Again, I think that these impact fees are rounding error on the end of the day when you're developing some of these projects where they're in effect. So I don't know if anybody has any thoughts or processes. Are there numbers in here, Ann Marie, that give us some numbers to look at?
There are.
Like a recommended increase or decrease should be determined? I got the number, numbers here, but.
Can I, is.
Yes, also Todd.
Is it, is it correct to say that the numbers are all taking into account the rate of inflation from the last?
I don't think that's correct.
That's not correct?
I don't think it is. Do you know?
Yeah, so the numbers are the.
The numbers have.
To, to keep up with inflation. Yeah, so for. If the city wants the impact fees to keep pace with the increased cost of construction, the recreational facilities impact fees, they're shown in table two of the attached ordinance, which are in place right now. We need to increase by thirty-three point seven two percent to reflect inflation from July twenty fourteen to January twenty twenty-five. And then, so that, and there's a table that is provided in there, so right now, the recreational facility impact fee for a house is one thousand ninety-three dollars and fifty-six cents. And if you took into account the thirty-three point seven two percent of inflation increase, that would increase to one thousand four hundred and sixty-two dollars and thirty-one cents. So approximately four hundred dollars for a house, approximately the same for a townhouse. About a hundred and fifty for apartments, about three hundred for mobile home.
No, wouldn't be that much for mobile home.
Well, that nine ninety-eight. Yeah, it's not.
Oh, yeah, 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 sorry.
Nine ninety-eight.
Thirty-seven.
So that would be for the recreational facility. And then transportation has a different rate increase because there's a different variable used. So transportation would be twenty-six point eleven percent, and for instance, a house would increase about four hundred dollars from two thousand one hundred and ten to two thousand six hundred and sixty-one. Townhouse would go from fourteen oh eight to seventeen seventy-six. Apartments would go from fourteen forty-nine to eighteen twenty-eight. Presently, all non-residential is waived in the ordinance, but the amount for it is left in the ordinance so that if city council decides that they want to get rid of that waiver, they can. So right now, it's zero for non-residential uses. Before, when it, when it was in place, before city council put in the waiver, for instance, for a general office, it was a dollar seventy per square foot of floor area. If that was adjusted for inflation, that would be two dollars and fourteen cents. Manufacturing would be.
I have them up on the screen for you, Ann Marie.
Okay. It would be seventy-nine cents for manufacturing. Warehousing would be ninety-eight cents. Restaurant would be seven dollars and five cents. I'm not going over what it was in place because it, prior to, because, I mean, right now, it's basically zero, so.
So what's the, go ahead.
So that, that was what I was trying to get, just a simplified way of describing it, because that, it is, it does say on the chart, adjusted for inflation, twenty fourteen to twenty twenty-five. So that, that was sort of my point is, because I know we got some written testimony in suggesting tweaking some of those. But I don't know if I'm in a position to make a decision about how exactly they should be tweaked on, on these particular categories suggested. What's presented here is a kind of a uniform adjustment on all of them.
Yep.
Which I guess I would be more comfortable with.
Yeah, I would as well. Again, maybe using the numbers that Ann Marie gave us, at what, thirty-seven on the, on the recreational and twenty-six on the.
Right.
And again, it sounds like a huge increase, twenty-seven percent over ten years, but, or thirty-seven percent over ten years, but at four hundred dollars for the cost of. but at $400 for the cost of a house, it's gonna be a couple of 2x4s. The price of, price of wood is going up, so.
I think that that was my, that's my concern about this, but unfortunately, they have not been revised since 2014. And that is really what, I think, the crux of the problem here. You know, just anecdotally, I can tell you that I heard lots of comments from folks when Casella raised the rates of the certain drop-off materials and, you know, the transfer station.
Yeah.
Of course, the city has no control over that, as they set those rates, but still, it was because they hadn't been increased since 2001 or something.
So all of a sudden, you got a huge increase to.
Yeah, I guess, you know, what I would, I will decide what we want to recommend here, but I guess part of the recommendation I would suggest would be that the city looks at this a little bit more frequently in terms of doing adjustments, you know, proactively, kind of as we go along, rather than just.
We have, we have looked at it and kicked the can down the, down the, down the road a few times that I can remember. I don't know that we've looked at it in a couple of years, but it's, I agree. It should be maybe a, maybe a annual event that we look at and.
Or at least every two year, three years, or something, something less than 10 would be.
The ordinance requires this report come to the planning board every year.
So that means we.
You look at it every year, you just have, have made the recommendation for the last 10 years to not do anything with it. Last year, you did not look at it.
But yeah, I was gonna say, I don't remember seeing this before, but again.
You did look at it the year before.
Yeah.
Okay, so maybe I missed that many. Again, this is for new development, new construction. So.
Non-commercial.
Or in addition on.
Or in addition, or anything that triggers a building permit, right?
Not a building, not if you, like, make renovation inside of your house and you move, you know.
Put a dam on or something like that.
You put, you add square footage.
Yeah.
If you add square footage.
Add addition on or something like that's gonna trigger it.
Yeah, but if you're just doing, if you pull a permit for electrical or whatever, and you're not doing adding stuff. This is for new construction.
Creation of a new unit.
New, yeah.
From a residential perspective, it's when you're creating units. If you're looking at commercial and industrial, it's adding square footage.
And I'll just read directly from the ordinance, which has it all spelled out. New development. New development includes any activity that is subject to review by the planning board, the zoning board of adjustment, the planning division, the building inspector, or any other city official or board that will result in the construction, erection, or creation of new or additional non-residential floor area, the construction, erection, or creation of one or more new dwelling units, including the installation or siding of a mobile home, the conversion of an existing use to another use, the conversion of a seasonal dwelling to a year-round dwelling, the construction, erection, or creation of 150 square feet or more of gross living area in or attached to a dwelling unit, or the expansion of existing use that will result in an increase in the demand for public capital facilities that are the subject of this ordinance. So it's specifically spelled out. Yeah.
So just when you're looking, so you're looking at it, it's, it's increasing a residential, single-family, which if you did the transportation, the transportation number now at $2,110 plus $1,000, you're adding what, 400?
That room over my garage is gonna cost me a lot more money, right?
So what's.
Why is the number so high for residential and minimal for commercial uses?
Well, because it's.
Well, so first, there's, the recreational facilities impact fee is only charged on residential. And it's only in place for residential. So, so the dollars that you're hearing are just for the residential, the, or just for the recreational. The transportation is, well, the transportation, you're hearing the dollar based on the square footage of the floor area for non-residential. And right now, it's zero. So without knowing the square footage of the non-residential that's going in, you know, so say it's a 3,500 square foot restaurant, so take 3,500. Times seven. Times the, times the number that I gave, and I imagine that'll be more than what the, what the house is. Yeah.
To answer your question as to what impact fees are used for, they're used for capital improvements that increase capacity of recreational facilities. So if you're expanding a park or creating a new park, doing studies or Memorial Field is probably a great example of where we could use impact fees to help offset the costs of making capacity improvements in our recreation facilities.
Yeah, they're just saying like a new house or new families moving to town, they're building a new house. They're now contributing to, you know, our parks and wrecks and this way and the beginning before.
And they have to be spent within six years of their collection.
Because I just, we just built a house, and I just paid that $1,000.
Yeah.
And it was scary.
Having just prepared the draft capital improvement program, I'm using recreation impact fees for, to offset taxpayer costs from what would otherwise be raised in taxes to help with those capital projects.
Counselor Todd.
Yeah, I was gonna just say also maybe for Mr. Thompson that you could define it, because for, again, for people who are now still watching this meeting at 10 after 10, which is very unlikely, but for members in the public that might have that same kind of question, I guess, is it correct to say that the concept is that these are fees that are imposed because you're increasing capacity, so you're increasing capacity, for example, at the recreational facilities within the parks? Yeah, to service the increase of. The fields may be used more, there may be more, or there may be a need for more expansion of those parks or additional parks created as a result of the expanded number of residents. Right? Okay, so that's. In the case of transportation impact fees, those are used to offset construction costs for making improvements to improve intersections and capacity in roadways.
Lighting. It's important to note that the impact fees can only be spent in the district in which they're allocated.
We have four benefit districts within the city.
And so if, is, is Ward 10 a district? I don't, I mean, I imagine it's different districts, but.
Actually, I can pull up the map, actually.
Only four.
But hypothetically.
So for example.
Give me a district that doesn't have a lot of parks.
For example, District 2, which is yours.
Yeah.
Merrill Park is the only physical.
For example.
Public park.
So if you're building a house in District 2, and no money is spent on Merrill Park, it's incumbent upon the property owner to come back and ask for their money back with it after six years.
If it's after six years, if it's not expended, it will be refunded back to the person who paid it.
Automatically refunded?
Uh, is another mechanism where we can use impact fees from any district is the citywide community center, because it does service the entire community. So we have utilized impact fees for that.
Getting a refund?
Well, we also.
No, I'm well past the point when I should have received a refund, but.
Also, in the case of transportation impact fees, where there are facilities that service multiple benefit districts, if you're within a mile, if the project is within a mile of the border of that benefit district, you can actually use impact fees from the neighboring district.
Yes, so.
All right, so.
I'm just gonna, I have to say the thing I say every time. I'm just opposed to impact fees.
Yeah.
So $4,123.84 on 2,500 square foot house or 5,000 square foot house, on top of the taxes people are gonna pay and top of the car registrations that people pay every year, I won't be supporting any vote to increase impact fees.
Okay, where does the board stand as far as impact fee, yea or nay?
I do this every year.
I'm inclined to increase them again because of the, we're not keeping up with inflation, we're not putting that money in, so it's, it is what it is. We don't have a lot of housing development being built, so if you wanna build it, again.
You mean like, single-family home?
Single-family residential homes being built on new lots, you know, new, in-the-ground buildings. It will affect ADUs, but then as, you know, 600 square feet, so if you're putting an ADU on it, it will affect the ADU cost as well.
Kind of a question for Mr. Thompson again. The proposed amounts of increases here, do you have any information about how this is comparable to other communities? I haven't done any of that research. I actually am hanging around for the next discussion on the. Yeah, I know, but you're here, you're sitting there. But I am here. I would need to do additional research. Right now, this report came from the planning division. I don't know that, if, if the planning board wishes to proceed with this, obviously, Matt, I would be involved working with Anne Marie and the planning staff to put together the appropriate process to move forward to the City Council. Yeah, that's why, that's why I was, I'm sorry, that's why I was asking. It just, you know, it sounds like that could be helpful information just for us anyway to know.
And then my last political point of view, we're in a generational housing crisis, so.
Yeah.
And we're.
Why increase it?
And we're having tariffs being added to, you know, lumber and things like that, so.
Would you be opposed to removing the, away actually to City Council, but would you be opposed to recommending to the City Council that the commercial embargo on the impact fees be removed and new commercial building, new commercial properties start to pay their fare of the transportation piece?
Interesting.
We can't, we can make the, I mean, they, we have it on the record as the amounts that are there, $1.70, the different numbers. So if we made a recommendation that we leave the residential alone, but.
Don't touch that.
Adjusted, put the, recommend that we put back in place the, I think it was two or three years ago, we moved them to spur on some growth.
This, this is actually a discussion that would be worthwhile to have with the Economic Development Advisory Committee as well.
Perfect. So can we kick this can down the road till next time? Can we kick it next time, because then I won't be here?
I honestly was waiting for Counselor Todd to say that we do this in an off-election year, so. Yeah, that's right. That was gonna be the next thing I was gonna say. But actually, you know, from the council point of view, I know that this has been discussed at council level. Some councillors certainly have already brought this up.
Okay.
So it's something that I think they would be interested in hearing, having information about.
So the request can also be made by the applicant to waive impact fees too, should there be a hardship or, and/or, I don't know, I say hardship, but we can put this into effect. I agree, I'm of the mindset to leave residential alone, let's stop commercial, and the applicant can make the decision when they come in front of us to waive them or not. So again, that can be decided upon.
I have, I have not had the experience of implementing or working directly with the impact fee ordinance here in Concord, but I've had many years of experience during my time in Lunandary administering impact fees, so I'm certainly glad to help with the discussion with EDAC, the council and the planning board.
I would be happy to.
Let's table it and bring it back.
With our, with our recommendation to look at specifically.
Right.
Yeah, I think it's a good idea.
With, with our recommendations to see what they think about them before we enact them.
All right, so is that, are we okay with tabling? Should I make a motion to table?
Second.
Okay, so motions were made and seconded to table. Are we okay with tabling?
Yeah, to table to. But are we making a request?
Table to June.
Yeah, June, so you're back.
With the request to.
You want me to sit in that seat with this discussion?
I will make a point at next week's EDAC meeting to bring it up as a topic.
Any, any, it's not that it really matters too, too much, but I like Counselor Todd's angle of where are we with regard to Nashua, Manchester, Keene, you know, other comparable cities.
We did.
I don't care about Loudon or Pembroke, but I, I do, but I don't care about it from an impact fee perspective, so.
You love them.
I would like to hear that, hey, Nashua and, you know, everybody else has got something that's much different. So if we're okay, we've got a motion to table to June, and we got a second. Any other discussion?
With any directives or just a motion to table to June? That EDAC, with the direction.
Yeah, but.
EDAC won't be discussing this next week. At the earliest, EDAC would probably be looking, this would be, it's highly unlikely there's gonna be any real subcommittee action going on in May due to the fact that it's the medal of council budget season.
Okay, well, and if we can get EDAC.
It'll be over the summer.
If not.
Are there any studies to show that it is detrimental to housing, construction? I mean, because the, the theory that we had years ago with the commercial was to want, to get more development, more commercial development, more to increase tax base, and we've seen quite a bit of building. I don't know if it's correlative or causal, but I'd, I'd be interested to know. I'm sure there are people that have done studies on this. So if we lower impact fees, do we get more housing construction? If we raise it, do we get more housing construction? It doesn't matter?
I don't think it matters. I mean, in the grand scheme of things, it's only.
In the grand scheme of things, infrastructure is the biggest factor.
For somehow is what you're telling me. Gotcha, Tim.
Okay. We good to table?
Yeah.
We got a motion and a second. No other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Okay. Let's move on to the meat of our agenda for tonight at 10:18. So if you didn't have a chance to read through the 58 pages of tantalizing zoning amendments and zoning ordinances as they're written here, it is fascinating reading. But I hope you all read it and took advantage of the, of the great job that staff did. And just for the record, again, I, these, these meetings from a process perspective are so much improved with Anne Marie and her staff as far as the amount of data that we've got in the packet, the information that's there, every box is checked, so good job. Keep going, guys. I know you don't get a lot of out of boys, but out of boy, out of girl. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Good job. Except for this. And this is mad. And this is mad.
Yeah, and let me point out that most of the 58 pages is not changes. It's because.
It's just the way we have to format the ordinance.
Yeah, so, so, you know, and so I'll briefly go through it. For instance, the second page is just, it's just, it's cleanup. There was one, one reference to code administrator that was missed in the last update when zoning was switched over to planning, so that's just eliminating code administrator and putting in deputy city manager or development or their designee. Then there's just adding zoning in front of, in front of board of adjustment, and adding the ZBA for reference. So we call it ZBA. We know that that's zoning board of adjustment, you know, so that's nothing big there. First substantive thing is also on the second page, it's multiple principal uses on a single lot. The language right now is problematic because, one, it's confusing, two, it's inconsistent, and three, it's incorrect. So it has been revised or proposed to be revised to separate out non-residential, so that it's clear, multiple principal non-residential uses may be established on a single lot, provided that they are allowed within, you know, within the, by rights, special exception or conditional use permit, and subject to all the requirements of the ordinance. And then we have a separate category for mixed use and a separate category for residential use. And then the residential uses are broken down even further, such that more than one single-family dwelling on a single lot is only allowed with a cluster development, more than one single-family dwelling and more than one two-family dwelling, which is a duplex, may be located on a single lot, but only through a planned unit development, more than one duplex may be located on a single lot only pursuant to a planned unit development. And then more than one manufactured home may be located on a single lot only pursuant to a manufactured housing park. Of course, everyone remembers that anyone can apply for a variance to that, which is how we get to houses on one lot. So what happens, what happens if the state passes the law that a manufactured home can go on a single-family lot? Which is coming down the pipe. And that's, and that's not what this is even addressing. This is saying that if you want more than one on a lot. Oh. Yeah, so right now, our zoning ordinance doesn't allow manufactured homes at all, and so. Residential, single-family lot.
That's a significant tax base issue.
It's not allowed, and so I'm, I'm very hopeful that the state senate, or that the state will pass that to get Concord into the 21st century.
So how does that affect, I mean, again, I think we brought it up before with Matt's recommendation that we wait and see what the senate does before we, or wait and see what legislature does. But that doesn't really address this.
Yeah, that doesn't have anything to do with this.
That's why I asked the question again.
Yeah, and, and whatever, whatever the state passes, I mean, once it's, once it's effective, it's effective. So we just play catch-up to change it, but, but we know that it's in effect, and so.
Right.
Essentially, I mean, it, it doesn't matter. If the state passes it, then we come through and, and we update according to what the state passes.
I was just gonna ask about the detached second ADU in this.
Yep.
How would A, does that not pertain to that, 3A?
It doesn't, and that's a.
It's helping to resolve that issue, because right now, we're having to go the route of getting a variance for multiple, because we don't have provisions for a detached ADU in the ordinance.
So, but does that, if I, could I build a detached ADU in addition to my attached ADU if 3A passes?
Yes, because detached accessory dwelling units are dealt with in a separate section of the ordinance, and currently detached isn't allowed at all. Yes, because it, because accessory dwelling units are dealt with in a separate section of the ordinance, and currently detached isn't allowed at all.
Correct, yeah.
And so I proposed allowing them.
Yeah, thank you for that.
Outright by right.
Thank you.
Not a conditional use permit, just outright. And that, that is a section for accessory dwelling units when we get down to that.
There's a lot of bipartisan support for that and other housing bills, so you're getting ahead of it.
We're being so proactive.
Just to give a brief overall thousand-foot view summary of where we are with this interim zoning process, the reason we're doing this is twofold. One, it's a city council goal that came from the most recent city council goal setting last year to look at the low-hanging fruit interim changes that can be taken place before the master plan commences, hopefully in fiscal twenty-six. In addition to that, it's also working on suggestions and recommendations from the Chamber of Commerce Local Government Advisory Committee, the Economic Development Advisory Committee, and other staff suggestions. First batch are the really, really low-hanging ones, the ones that we felt we could get through quickly. We're already working on batch two, which will include parking, because parking is a huge concern, both from staff level and from the, the business community level. So that will be happening in the next batch, that we continue to hope that we're gonna try to get these. I, I think the commitment we tried to make to EDAC was that we want to have these in front of the council by the end of the calendar.
Alright, let's move on. You good?
Yep.
Okay. Alright, Anne Marie.
Uh, the changes to family daycare facility or family group daycare facility are directly, directly taken from the RSA that requires these, so right now, we have the. I'm on page, I don't know, four, the chart.
Okay.
The table. In our ordinance, they're listed as a special exception. They are permitted by right per the, per the legislation that was enacted last year. And so when one comes forward, we are abiding by the, the state law. This just, this just gets our, gets it updated in paper. And then you can see that accessory dwelling unit, I've changed to permitted by right rather than special exception.
Perfect.
And. In the fam- in-home family daycare, is there maximum number? There is, and that's in the definition, so I, I took the, I took, I mean, I just took it verbatim. Okay. From the RSA. And, and that's in a different section, we'll, we'll get down there. Great. The next few pages are the wetland buffers and setbacks, and there was really no substantive change to this, other than we in the planning division just wanted to add the word wetland before buffer, just so that it's clear that it's the wetland buffer, not any other type of buffer.
An insure instead of insure.
Yes, we changed the, the insure to the correct spelling of E with insure. And do-to-do, going on down, I completely struck twenty-eight dash five dash two.
Duplex or family.
Because there is just no rational use for that requirement, and the number of people that apply for variances, we have at least two a month, and they're always granted. And, um, I don't know, from where I come from, this rule was, was so crazy to me. I'm like, why are we requiring so much for a duplex?
Less important where we have infrastructure, a little bit more where we don't, but we don't typically see the issues in Concord that some of the smaller communities have.
Anyway. There you have it. I'm proposing to strike it. And then we get to the section on daycares, and then this is, again, it's, it's taken verbatim from, so, and here's where the, the definitions are. So a family daycare is six children, and that includes any foster children residing in the home, and all children who are related to the caregiver except children who are ten years of age or older. In addition to the six children, up to three children attending a full day, full-day school program may also be cared for up to five hours per day on school days, and all day during school holidays, provided that the after-school, et cetera, et cetera. So those are the definitions directly from RSA, as I say, as defined in RSA one seventy E two.
So, Anne Marie, is there anything in here about, I'm looking for the word licensed?
Yeah.
Licensed?
That's all covered under RSA one seventy E two.
Just as long, it's covered under there.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, I made the assumption that these were all gonna be licensed facilities.
It's, again, the language is taken directly from, from the state. The state doesn't necessarily differentiate, so.
State has been trying to take away licenses for a lot of things, and certifications for a lot of things, so.
I don't know, the local PC's been pretty busy.
As I recall from my, just going back a number of years, I don't know if the statutes are still in play, but I believe the, the family daycare was not a licensed requirement from the state.
There's a difference, right. It depends on how many children you have.
I think it's once you go above six that you end up in license.
And if they're related or unrelated, yeah. I don't mean, I don't know all of it, but.
Okay, what's next?
Yeah, and, and I included in there all requirements for family daycare and group family daycare facilities as adopted in the rules of the New Hampshire Department of Health and Human Services should be met. Hope so.
Good with that? Okay.
Then we get down to accessory buildings and facilities, and I just added non-portable standby generators, basketball courts, just cause those tend to come up, and that way it's clear, it's in the language. Everyone knows that they are an accessory building facility. And then I took out the more than fifty feet from any street, and and took out the encroachment into the setback, so that it's just flat out, if it's no more than twelve feet in height or two hundred and fifty square feet in gross area, then it can be five feet from the property lines. And, and again, this is something that gets a lot of variance requests that are always approved. Fenceless walls and hedges, just added retaining wall for clarification, and then broke out, right now, it says height in all residential districts, but it, that gets confused with commercial and non-residential districts. So we just broke it out. So that it's clear, and then gave the option for a conditional use permit if they wanted to exceed that four feet in height in the front, or eight feet in height on the side or rear.
So I'm driving on Route four, headed towards, I mean, probably Dover or Durham, and that giant hedgerow that's there, that would not be allowed in Concord.
Is it hedgerow?
Yeah, right.
I know where you're talking about. That wouldn't, right, no.
That would, that's like twelve feet tall.
Especially in the front, because it would be a sight distance impediment.
Just as an example, yeah, thanks.
So does the code go and chop them, like, down to eight feet?
Yeah, like they didn't quit the street, I mean, not Quitting Street, Fruit Street.
Fruit Street, you have to take every, every branch off the side of the tree. Alright, what's next?
Then we get to the accessory dwelling unit, where it's a secondary attached or detached residential unit used in conjunction with and subordinate accessory to a sing, a, a house. And there's the purpose, it's permitted by right in all zoning districts, may be established as an accessory use to a single-family detached dwelling unit. One accessory dwelling unit shall be allowed per lot without additional requirements for lot size, frontage, space limitation, or other controls beyond what would be required for, for a house. Does it necess- and it says not on wheels, right? Uh. I don't want there to, you know what I mean by like, if it's on wheels, meaning they've, they're RV or they're whatever, but I know RVs are allowed, like, but it's, RVs are not allowed for someone to have it as their permanent residence in their yard. I mean, I just didn't, I just.
I know where you're going, but I don't know that this is the area we probably want to do that in a separate supplemental standard.
I know we have a RSA, we have a section that talks about the, that if you have like a, an RV or a camper, whatever, that it can't be used as a permanent.
Correct.
Residence or dwelling for, for, as, as, and I wouldn't want it to be confused that that's now can be considered a detached ADU.
It's not.
Do you know what I mean?
Understood, Anne Marie, that, this language would not impact that.
Okay. Well, and I can add something to make sure and specify. Well, we, and then again, I don't know, I know I've read it before, but there is.
I believe we already have a prohibition on it, yeah.
We do have a prohibition on it, but I just wanted to make sure that this didn't, like, allow it to fall into a gray area here.
As long as the language for the prohibition specifies it can't be used as a dwelling unit, ADU, primary dwelling, it's all a dwelling unit, so it wouldn't, it would not allow it to be called an ADU.
Okay.
As long as that language is there. We'd have, I, we'd need to double-check.
We need to go back to that to me. I know that it specifically says, and it does identify camper, something on wheels, blah, 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 as those not allowed as a permanent dwelling unit. And you're talking about that's from the, an RSA?
No, I think it's in our ordinance somewhere.
It's in our ordinance somewhere, I'm just.
I'll, I'll, I'll look before.
You get where I'm going with this.
I know where you're talking about.
I do, yeah. I just wanna.
How about, how about the size? This is different. The accessory dwelling unit on L is smaller, not smaller than seven hundred and not larger than a thousand.
So seven hundred and fifty square feet, by state law, we cannot limit it to less than seven hundred and fifty square feet, so our current ordinance is actually incorrect.
It's six hundred, right?
It says six hundred and, and.
Not larger than seven fifty.
Yeah, so, so we changed the seven fifty to be, to be current with state, and then we just added a thousand.
So if you have a six hundred and fifty square foot space, or you can't do that, you gotta have seven hundred and fifty square feet? Is that the way I'm reading it?
Yeah, that's right. In other words, if, if my space above my garage is seven hundred and twenty-five feet, I can't do it.
Right, without getting variance.
You'd have to go for a variance, right, but that's what we're trying to avoid with a lot of this.
Where's the seven fifty come from? That's a state.
The state law, yeah, that comes from the state.
That section needs to mark, we'll, we'll, we'll take a look at.
The size, so, yeah, L.
I mean, I'm good with the high side, but the low side.
I believe the statute says you can't require it to be any smaller than, or you can't re, this, you can't reset a maximum of anything less than seven fifty.
Well, and that is subject to change.
Yes, I know.
Right now, so. I don't know, off the top of my head, what.
I, I think what we may want to do is look at doing this as a statutory reference and say that the accessory dwelling should not violate RSA X, Y, Z.
Yeah, it's, it's out of touch with reality right now. I mean, you got people who want to buy tiny homes, and I know people that live in four hundred square foot.
It's a pretty good-sized place, I mean, that's.
Yeah, exactly.
I don't, I don't think we want to put a minimum size.
Right. Two-bedroom.
I mean, we just can't require it to be any, we can't require a minimum size of anything less than seven fifty as state law sits today.
Yeah.
Bathroom, bedroom, family room, and a kitchen is six hundred and.
Yeah, it could be less than that, depending on, you could have less than that.
The intent of the statute, and again, I know this because I spent a lot of time doing it using Meramec, is that towns were using a large minimum size as a way of granting these for having.
And it's inside the envelope, inside the house, right?
It's typically, for an attached ADU, but for detached, again, you're allowed to do it as a separate building.
Yeah, yeah, subject to all the setbacks.
All the setbacks and all the.
So how about common space on a, on a, um, split level with a garage, and then over the garage space, and you've got a, you've got a staircase that goes down to the garage? Does the staircase count in your square footage?
I don't believe it would be considered gross living area, so I don't think that would be included in the calculation.
Okay, next Tuesday at one o'clock.
Yeah, come on, I'm gonna come over and ask.
Hang out with us.
Join me.
Okay.
He'll be back.
Alright, so let's move on, it's getting late. So other points on accessory dwellings, that's the only one I noted, was L. Anything else? We struck out entirely twenty-eight, five, third, fifty-two, all the way to the end. Any other? Again, I'd do some work on L, but other than that, it looks pretty good. Alright, Anne Marie, what's next?
Uh, then we get down to signs, and you see building frontage should not be struck, so.
Should not be stuck, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, mine are too.
Uh. Matt added the definition for mural. Danielle has indicated there's problems with it, so don't get.
Yeah, don't get too wet into that one.
Actually, Danielle said she won't, she needs to review the whole sign thing, so I, so.
Well, that's good, I'm glad, because that'll help us if she reviews it.
So maybe.
We'll just walk through that. What's a ghost? I had a question on.
It's like when you have the, like, if you had a Coca-Cola sign on the side of a building that's faded out on a brick building, and it's, and then.
We have several in downtown.
Yeah, we have like three or four of them.
That's what they're called.
The flower.
Oh, ghost signs.
It's not like a projection on the street or something.
It's not old, it's not old and weathered, it's ghost.
Yeah, right.
Alright.
It's not historic.
So if we want to just move past signs?
Yeah, I think so.
Signs may have moved into batch two.
Look at all the pages, we can skip right by. Oh, hallelujah. Look at them all.
Did they, did they include definition about menus?
Alright, so if I'm not mistaken, it's page forty is where we are next, right?
We encountered it.
Boards and departments?
Uh, yeah, this is just.
Housekeeping, little issues.
To me, it seems like it is, so, yeah, ordinances, needs to be ordinance, uh. Change chairman to chairperson.
I don't know about that, I'm gonna strike that back again.
I'm glad he didn't say just chair.
The chair, the, um, twenty-nine, three, C two, uh, those are, that's not what's in the RSA, so.
Requisite findings, okay.
So I just, I made it so that it's verbatim from the RSA.
That'll be contrary to public trust.
Three, there's that, whatever is, that RSA six, seven, four, three, three, one B is incorrect, it's just six, seven, four, thirty-three. So I just cleaned that up. Provided, on page forty-three, provided clarification on non-refundable ZBA fees, and it still says that it's payable at the code administration office, which is just incorrect, so clean that up. Provided clarification on the property owner authorization form, eliminated the reference to three copies, cause we don't need three copies anymore, everything's paper. The notification, uh, fix the notification so that it matches RSA. And same with for public hearing, that just matches the RSA.
Decisions by the planning board. Look, there's nothing wrong in that whole section, L.
The situation. Uh, so on forty-six, just struck the part with respect to content of applicants, because it's, it just, it's in accordance with the site plan regulations. As for a standalone CUP. And just.
Sketch plat application.
It's like there's an incorrect reference to twenty-eight, six, nine, A, and it's supposed to be B. Spelled, uh, comprehensive development plan, there is no such thing as a sketch plat application in the subdivision regulations.
Never heard of that. Sketch plat application, huh.
So, changed it to comprehensive development plan.
Remember, gotta turn around in three days, though.
And then.
Yeah, all this work.
Provided some clarifications on submittal requirements for, uh, project or sign permit application. Right now, it, it requires a separate architectural design review application. And we just don't need it, cause when the sign permit application comes in, that's when we, we send it to architectural design review if it needs it, so this, this cleans that up. It's not taking away architectural design review. It's just, it's taking away the separate application requirement, so it makes it easier for the applicant, so they only need to submit one application instead of two.
No, no significant policy changes regarding a different board or committee until we go through the master plan.
And then another insure to insure, and.
Forty-nine.
Page fifty is just striking appendix D, because we're getting rid of appendix D, and this is the only place in the entire zoning ordinance. and this is the only place in the entire zoning ordinance that references appendix D. And appendix D is an outdated trip generation from two thousand and eleven, I think. And we just, we don't use it, so. And then updated appendix B and appendix C, which are the arterial streets and collector streets respectively, and as you can see by what's being struck, what's being added, they are sadly outdated.
Can you quickly give me a definition, the difference between major arterials and major collectors?
Arterials move traffic and collectors collect traffic.
Collect traffic?
So, good knee.
Arterial, arterials have heavier traffic.
Okay, I mean, thank you.
The collector collects the traffic to disperse it onto an arterial.
I feel just really stupid.
It's basically, the arterials would be major inter-community roadways.
Inter-community roadways.
That connect communities.
That's helpful to me.
And collectors take the local streets and get them to the arterials.
Like, I, I can, I, we work on, I work on Old Turnpike Road, and it's a, like, it could just collects cars until it gets out and flows through Manchester Street, you know, on and off, and so I guess that's...
So, that's interesting. So Mountain Road from Shama to Shaker Road, that's not a, that's not very long.
It's, yes, six hundred yards.
But then it's not arterial.
It's a major, it's where cars sit and wait to go onto the major.
Everybody from Massachusetts uses it on the weekends.
Yes, on Sundays, since they're trying to leave the north country.
Interesting.
Major collectors.
Volumes have a lot to do with it.
Pleasant Street to Liberty Street.
Wow, I mean, this is what you do all day. I mean, I know you do, like, a lot, but this is, like, how do you, cross-referencing all this?
Did you put this through ChatGPT? Did you put this through a ChatGPT?
Yeah, I mean...
Artificial intelligence.
Oh, no, I did not.
I was sitting with you, because I'm like, how'd you get through all this?
Anne Marie Intelligence is AI that way.
I, I don't envy the amount of work that Anne Marie has done. I've been doing zoning amendments and rewriting regulations for thirty years. It's tedious.
Yeah, that's incredible.
It's tedious work that requires a lot of attention to detail and focus, and nobody can do it alone. It requires people to help.
Do you have like five screens open?
It's, 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 it's a testament to Anne Marie's focus and work ethic that she was able to put this together.
Thank you.
It's like a detective murder board or something.
Let's move on, so...
And, and that's it?
That's it, that's it.
Wow, that's impressive stuff.
That is good.
All right, let's clean up.
That's only batch one.
So I was gonna ask, there's nothing, because we talked, you mentioned signs, but I know we're leaving, maybe leaving that part out of it, but would you generally describe, there's nothing in here in terms of these changes that are gonna necessarily change the processes? So you mentioned, for example, you know, signs are still gonna go to ADR.
No process changes.
So there's not, yeah, so just for people in the public that might be watching, or people that have a question about that, it's not gonna cha- or, or, you know, entities out there that might want to come and apply for something, we're not really changing that part of the process, right?
I think the only process change which is actually with the council now is the change of the demolition review.
Right.
Which is taking out a committee but leaving the actual process with one board instead of two.
Right, right, okay, yeah.
But you will have a process change on the ADR, the application piece, where you took out from two to one, but it's a good...
But, but it's still gonna go to ADR.
Still goes to ADR.
It's a good process.
The process is still the same, it's just the elimination of...
The end result process is no application, exact application. Okay, great job. So, recommendation-wise on these, do we recommend that they go to the next step? Well, we're just gonna do these one at a time.
Yeah, the next step, we, we need to take this actual document to Economic Development Advisory Committee.
Which will be two today.
And the, and the chamber, and then if they have any cha- and Architectural Design Review Committee, and then if they have any changes, it'll come back to the board. Yeah, the next batch, we're going to take to all of those three groups to encompass all of their changes before it comes to planning, so you don't have to do it twice, yeah.
Okay.
You'll see it again.
All right, what's next? Motion to adjourn has been made by Matt.
Second.
Seconded roundly, all those in favor? Opposed, anyone? No? We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.